Evening, welcome to the June 9th, 2025 Township Board of Trustees Business Meeting. Start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first we'll have a public hearing. It will be the Elba Island Special Assessment. Derek, if you'd like to just talk a little bit about that and then if there's anything.
The township some time ago was approached by the residents on Elba Island about performing a special assessment for the resurfacing of the private portion of Elba. There is a process to that that involves a variety of different public hearings. Tonight is, I believe, the first or the second public hearing. There will be a third public hearing if this one goes successful this evening, in which the board at that third meeting would go ahead and perform the special assessment or institute the special assessment. There's a variety of motions that are on the agenda for tonight's meeting to take the second step in that. But the purpose of tonight's special hearing or public hearing is to provide an opportunity for the residents to ask any questions about the proposed special assessment and hopefully get some answers to any questions you might have.
As Derek stated, we do have a action item tonight to vote. Action item number six. Just so you know where it's at, maybe, do you feel, I mean, I feel, can we just maybe switch since they're all here? And not to say you don't like to stay at the meeting, but really, why should you? Does that make sense? Yeah, can we, I'd rather do that so we can hear from you, have the public hearing, and then we'll vote, and then somebody want to get back home. I mean, it's only reasonable, I think, that you don't, shouldn't have to stay for the whole meeting because of one thing, and we have a large group tonight. So let's just first go through this. Does anybody want to come to the podium, say anything, ask anything? Or is there anything, are you just here to listen to the vote and see what we have to say or what we're going to do? But this is your time now, if you'd like to state anything. Anybody at all? I didn't, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry?
I don't see anyone.
Yeah, I just couldn't see through that. So, okay, so no one wants to come up? Is there any questions? I don't know if the board has anything, but we went through this, and I think we're prepared to vote tonight, and.
Did the residents get a copy of the cost estimates, the breakdown of what it would be per parcel, the duration of the term, things of that sort? If you have not, we can provide that to you, so that you're aware.
You've seen the.
I did not see that.
We just divided it like sixty.
Correct.
So the budget was provided.
Okay.
So there was not any, nothing done as far as like, when you were going to lots and all that.
And that is the proposal, that is the proposal. That the township is presenting as well. So the total cost of the project was $67,160.75. That was utilizing the vendor that the township is using for the public portion of the road. There is, under the law, an allowance of a 5% administrative fee for a total of $3,358 that the township would place on top of that expense, and that's for basically administering the special assessment district, all the paperwork, the process that we're going through now, and the management of the rolls. Making the total project cost $70,518.79. The, there is interest that were permitted under the legislation to charge. That is at 5%, at a cost of $9,327.80, making the total special assessment cost $79,846.59. As the gentleman mentioned, that was divided evenly across 16 parcels for a total of $4,990.41 per resident or a total annual cost of $998.08. And that, I believe, was a five-year term. We're allowed to go out to 15 years, but the shorter the duration, the more it's recommended, just so that you're not butting up against the longevity of the improvement that you're doing. Obviously, residents do have the opportunity to be able to pay the full amount upfront if they choose. Teresa and I were just talking about how that interest would be calculated then. Obviously, if you're paying upfront without that five-year duration, your interest expense would then go down versus carrying the full five-year term. So you might have some savings if that's the case. For the benefit of the board, funds for this would come from a revolving loan fund and be paid back to the revolving loan fund.
Derek, is this the same revolving loan fund that we use to give loans to, interdepartmental loans?
That is correct.
Yes.
Yeah, come on up if you like, and just give your name, sir, and we know where you're from.
From 28402 Elba Drive. I think we're all in agreement as a group that we are dividing this 16 ways evenly, but paragraph four of the resolution says that it's to be assessed against each parcel shall represent the relative benefit received by that parcel in proportion to the total benefit of all parcels. I think we're all agreeing that we're getting 1/16 of the benefit, but I don't know if that's important to any of the other members of the group.
Talking about paragraph four, which is close to the end, the last paragraph four. "Special assessment role shall be prepared to include all parcels of land to be assessed with the names of respective record owners of each parcel if known, and also including the total amount to be assessed against each of the parcels of land. The amount to be assessed against each parcel of land shall represent the relative benefit received by that parcel of land in proportion to the total benefit of all parcels in the land of the district." So your concern is that, by way of that verbiage, that it might reference the footage versus the parse, just the parcel?
I'm not super concerned, because I think everybody's agreed that it's getting split 16 ways, but that isn't exactly the way this is written. When you speak of proportion, that might, you just might want to correct that, that's all.
I don't think there would be any concern about removing that portion.
Well, if everybody's in agreement, then I don't think that's an issue. And I know in earlier discussions, is it still on schedule for August, September?
This construction season, but it is bridge-dependent. So, so to answer your question, yes, as far as we know, yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else want to come up?
That makes sense.
They're all set? Okay, what we'll do is we'll close the public hearing. If you guys are all set, no other questions, nothing, and we'll move on, and then I'll change the agenda for you, that we'll get it up to the front. And why don't we close, so it would be 7:09. Do I have to give you time that it's closed, the public hearing? Okay, we'll close it at 7:09. Let's move on. Brian, as we did last time, I remember when I moved up something that had a large group in the audience. Unfortunately, we can't change numbers. I know it sounds odd, but we got to make it like, one-half now is, instead of six, the action item? Sorry, it's no, no offense to anybody here, but you're not even a one yet. We got to make you one-half to go to the top, because we have to keep the same numbers. I know it's a goofy rule, but we'll do that, and I will change that as we get moving right now. Okay, the public hearing is over. I have deletions, or anybody else first off for additions or deletions to the agenda? I've got a couple. We're going to delete action item number three. Do I need a motion for that? And then a second?
Motion?
Second.
Okay, so all in favor to delete number three action item?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, thank you. You know, I probably should have said, we've been asking for the paperwork from Wayne County for a while, and they just haven't gotten to us, so I apologize for that, for this item. Okay, the next one. I want to add number 10, and we'll, I guess I'll just make the motion. Number 10 for Bridge Commission Interview Candidates. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. This just came where we had Bridge Commission candidates, and all I'm going to ask for tonight is how many do you want, we'll go further in this, but how many do you want to interview? And that's all that is to it on that one, so. State the motion.
State the motion you want to add, for us to vote on adding it.
Okay, so I want to add the motion to move the Township Board interview five people for the Bridge Commission. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, and that was in reverse, obviously, of what the reason is. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so that will be now number 10? Okay, well, and I'll handle that one. Now, I also would like to move action item number six, approval of Elba Island Special Assessment, up to one-half would be the number. It's the only one I can come up with. I need a second on that one?
Second.
Second.
Okay. All in favor to move action item number six to item number one-half to get them to the top?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carried. So now I need a motion to approve the agenda as amended on all these differences.
So move.
Second.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carried. Everything is set. We'll get you up there after a couple of things we have to do here, just some housekeeping. Okay, number one, we have no presentations tonight. Also, we have a public comment. Of some of you that haven't been here, we changed public comment. It can be on anything, on the agenda, on anything you want to just talk about. Doesn't have to be, again, it was only four agenda items. Does anybody have any public comment of anything for any reason tonight? Anything? Yes, sir, just come on up, give your name and.
Rick LeBar, 25408 Fourth Street. I'd just like to thank Derek. Couple weeks ago, we were up here with the crack center, Belleville Road.
Remember that.
And, you know, you guys followed up really nice, and I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment on anything tonight, any topic? I just want to make sure else, I can't see. Janelle?
Thank you, Janelle.
I'll make this brief, but I just want to address and take a moment to address, my name is Janice McNeam, I'm the Airport Manager, in regards to the recent posts that are circulating on social media in regards to island athletics facility, and on both of myself and the Airport Commerce Park Commission. I just want to make it clear that we are not forcing them out, and we actually recognize the importance of this facility here on the island and how important it is to all the residents. And I'd like to express that we, as the commission, understood that this was a valued asset for the community, and actually, as a result to what a huge asset that that was, we had worked over a period of the past five years, including a reduction of rent and helping with the understanding that this reduction in their rent would help to grow and sustain their business model. So I just wanted to let everyone know that that's kind of where we are and where we're standing, and if anybody here that's listening tonight, we are having a meeting on June 16th, and everyone is welcome, and it's here in this building at 6 o'clock. That's it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Janelle. Anyone else for, yes, Chad, come on up.
Chad Novak, Elba Drive. I want to thank everybody for Island Fest and your attendance and all the help that you gave out there. It was a huge success, other than a little bit of rain. I know Jameson's going to talk briefly about it. The carnival did excessive numbers. The vendors were happy in the hangar, and it seemed the public just had a really good time. So I just want to say thank you to the Township Board, and next year it's May 29, 30, 31, 2026.
I was going to talk about that, and you stole my thunder. That's all, you're leaving, I know, and we're done with Elba. That's okay. Thank you, Chad, for that, but I had a report at the end, and it was really close to what you're saying. So thank you, sir. Okay, I'm sorry, anybody else for, young man, are you coming up? Nope, you're good? Okay. Kevin, the consent agenda.
I'd like to move to approve the consent agenda for 25-018.
Second.
Thank you. The consent agenda consists of the minutes of the May 12, 2025 regular meeting, the check register dated through June 6th of 2025, the community development fee schedule, the community development reports, and I think that is all the, everything on the agenda, and I would like to move that we vote to approve that.
Okay, Jameson seconded it already, right?
Yes.
Okay, for the consent agenda, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Okay, consent agenda passed. We will start with the action items. We'll go to the approval of Elba Island Special Assessment Petition, Project Completion Plans, Cost Estimate, and Special Assessment District, which will be action item.
Point five.
Point five.
Point five, if you will. Go ahead.
Point five.
Would you like that?
Yes, let's.
Take that?
Take that.
Thanks.
All right. The, I'd like to move that for the approval of the Elba Island Special Assessment Petitions, Project Completion Plan, Cost Estimate, and Special Assessment District. Recommendations, the Groseal Township Board hereby approves the attached Elba Island Special Assessment District Resolution, the history, purpose, and explanation.
Hold on, need a, yeah, hold on. Got a second, Jameson?
Yep.
Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry, Kevin, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you. The attached resolution approves the petition received, project details, plans, cost estimates, and the district boundaries for the proposed Elba Drive private section. The implementation schedule following the approval, the assessment role will be developed, and then the board will need to set an additional public hearing via resolution to be considered on June 23rd. If that resolution passes, a notice about the date and time of the public hearing will be published. And is that accurate?
Yes, a couple of things to add. In paragraph three, the duration of the special assessment in the resolution that was in the packet, that's blank, that should be five years. Five years is the special assessment duration. And then relative to Mr. Freeze's concern, I would suggest an amendment to paragraph four to reflect the following verbiage. "Special assessment role shall be prepared to include all parcels of land to be assessed with the names of the respective record owners of each parcel if known, and also include the total amount to be assessed against each of the parcels of land. The amount to be assessed shall be 1/16 of the total special assessment cost applied against each addressed parcel of land. The role shall contain a certificate stating that the role was made pursuant to this resolution adopted on June 9th, 2025, and shall conform in all respects to the directions contained in this resolution and statutes of the state."
I think that's appropriate for what?
And to be clear, we're not voting to approve the resolution tonight. We're voting to continue the process for the next hearing, correct?
This is a resolution that stands, but it isn't the finalization of the special assessment. That is correct.
We need a motion to amend the verbiage now that you've suggested this.
So long as the second, the second to the motion is okay with the amended change, then that would be the proper process.
Good. I'll state it out loud. Good? Okay. Anything from the board before we vote?
One question or comment?
Sure.
So the way that I understand it, like, I think it's a really good thing to offer this so that people don't have to come up with those funds all at once, in the way, I believe, Derek, tell me if I'm wrong, but the way that the township is protected is that a lien goes along with the House and the tax bill, so that even if somebody paid for three years and then they moved, that would just remain with the home so that the new homeowners?
That is correct.
Okay, so I just wanted to state that. Okay, so then.
Yes.
Closing, they would pay it off?
Yeah, it doesn't get defaulted or anything like that, I guess is the answer to the question.
Okay, I just wanted to call that out because there's not a risk of doing this. So, okay, thank you.
We did it on our street. It worked out very well, and it actually helped us in the long run.
Yeah, and helps the people, so.
Okay. All right, anything else? Anything from the board? Okay. Action item number one-half. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Okay, motion carried. We'll be moving to the next step. Thank you, people, for coming tonight.
Elba people.
We'll let the room clear in a minute.
We got exciting action items coming up.
I don't want to miss it.
Okay, Margaret, you're next.
So the topic I have is GIPD DEA Task Force Vehicle. The recommendation is approval to purchase a vehicle for GIPD DEA Task Force position.
Second.
So the history on this is, in May of 2025, the Groseal Police Department, with the Township Board approval, sold their 2019 Ford Explorer K-9 vehicle to the Wayne PD for $25,000. Police Administration is projecting on assigning a GIPD officer to our DEA Task Force position in July of 2025. That position requires an unmarked vehicle for that assignment. GIPD is seeking Township Board approval to purchase a new 2025 Jeep Grand Cherokee, third row in, so it's the long version, third row, in the amount of $42,751. This vehicle will be purchased through MyDeal Vehicle Dealer using the aforementioned $25,000 and the remaining amount from DOJ federal forfeiture funds. I also want to point out that the PD, they forecast for these big items, they're very well aware of them in their budget on how they're going to handle them. I do want to point out that while we're projecting this officer is going to go to DEA in July, we have some concerns with our staffing, and that's why we put it off until then. We have two officers on FMLA and one on medical, and then another is going to go on FMLA, so that's why we've kind of put things off a bit. But I just want everybody to be aware, until we have somebody in DEA, we don't have an opportunity to collect forfeiture funds, so please keep that in mind.
Any questions for Margaret?
Yes, I'd like to discuss that briefly for a minute. I seem to recall this was brought up in conversation at our last meeting, and it's one thing to have a vehicle, but when you're involved with, with the drug enforcement, you are better off to also have a dog, and you needed an officer trained in that, or that's what my memory serves me as being. And it seems like we have one piece that we're buying here without all the other parts and pieces. And I know your budget there at the police department is a bit strained. Where's this other person coming for this vehicle? I'm just curious about that. What's going on here, I guess, is my bottom-line summary.
So, like I mentioned, we have two people on medical, well, I'm sorry, FMLA, and we're going to have another going on FMLA in July, and we have one person on medical that should be coming off of medical, I believe, sometime this week. But how this works is kind of very similar to how it worked previously. The DEA actually fund a position, so when we put that person in DEA, they are funding that position. Our issue is, is that we don't currently have enough officers for road patrol, so until we know we have that staffing, we are holding him back from DEA. They're aware of this. This has been discussed with them by the chief. With respect to the K-9, and I'm going to probably touch on this a little bit in my liaison report, but after the death of K-9 Officer Atlas, we swapped out our DEA person. Sergeant Carrico chose to come back from DEA. There's another person that will be appointed into DEA, and until he's settled in DEA, we've decided not to, you know, have another K-9. However, this car, just like many others, we call them, where I work, outfitters, but you can get just about any vehicle outfitted to meet your needs, and this is no different. So if we choose to do a K-9, this vehicle, we can easily get it outfitted.
For the K-9?
For the K-9, yep.
If I may add something?
Absolutely.
Bill, just so you understand, the DEA officer has always been paid through by funds brought in by the DEA, and the vehicle we've, I even purchased, I may have even purchased the last one for the individual from the DEA through forfeiture money. So the income brought in, under the rules of forfeiture, pays for this. The only difference is due to the death of the K-9 dog, a canine, if you will, I guess, that's kind of redundancy. But the death of the canine, we don't have one anymore, and if we get one, then we just have to outfit as Margaret said. So that, that's, we have the officer already, we're not hiring a new one for the DEA. He's just here because they're shorthanded on the road, and we don't want to let him go yet.
Got it.
And that's the reason. Does that kind of help out a little bit?
Yes.
Okay, good.
I also just want to, I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
Just really quick want to add before I forget. I want to send my compliments to our confidential admin Wendy, because she really did a phenomenal job getting the best deal she could for a vehicle. She searched all over. They realized that this MyDeal was going to be a much better situation purchase-wise, and it saved them considerable amount of money, and I want to just call that out, because Wendy did a really great job on that.
All right, thank you. Is there anything else? I'm sorry, Mark, did you have something?
Yeah, I just wanted to, just for clarification, so this, this money.
Yeah, I just wanted to, just for clarification, so this money for this vehicle is going, are coming from the the sale of the previous car, and then the rest of it's come out of forfeiture funds?
Correct, yes.
So there will be nothing come out of the police budget per se, or the township budget? I just want to clarify that for the viewing audience.
Yes, no, that's good. I appreciate that. Yes, absolutely.
Yep, absolutely correct.
Joe, if I could comment?
Oh, sure.
Um, I also saw that the nice thing was this went through, and I didn't know about this before, but I think it's MyDeals, and so the state has already has all these contracts, and so it makes it easier for them to go out and find a vehicle to do the bidding, because it's almost like the state of Michigan has that set up for them. But anyways, it seemed like a good way to go about it, to make sure that we're getting the best deal on the vehicle, so.
Now, we started way before I came in in '09, so it was probably in 96 it started. So that's almost 30 years ago then, right, from 96?
So do I understand right, Joe? So it actually gets you a lot more quotes or an ability to?
Well, it gives you the lowest price you'll find anywhere because they do it by volume. Now, I don't know about the quotes or anything, but when you go to them and you get a state bid, it is the lowest price that we found always. And we buy our regular, we were buying our regular cars on state bids, and I don't know, I don't think that's happened on every vehicle after that, but we were getting them, and it's a good way to go, obviously. It saves us all money.
Right, okay, thank you.
Okay, for the action item number one, task force vehicle. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Margaret, you have number two also, since it's from the PD?
I do. So, this is a motion to approve the purchase and installation of two cameras for Centennial Farm.
Second.
Second.
The Grozeal Police Department is seeking Township Board approval to purchase two cameras for Centennial Farm in the amount of $3,323. The current camera system, located on Centennial Farms, is not operational and needs replacement. These cameras will focus on the playground, recreational building parking lot area, and main roadway coming into the farm. GIPD will utilize their current camera network vendor, EOS, for this project. Are there any questions on this?
Um, no, I just have a comment. Back in probably 2010, 2011, I made sure that we had cameras in all the public areas of Grozeal, which would be the commons, even the old play scape when it was, you know, up and running. The Sunrise Park. There's a couple other areas that we did put cameras, you may see them anyway, but Parkway and Meridian, we have cameras at the intersections. We have them at McComb and Meridian. I put them on both bridges. This is separate from the LPR. Up and down the bridge, you can see. And what we were missing was Centennial Farm, which is of, you know, it's, the kids are there, there's, the playground's there, there's horses, there's people walking around. We've had numerous issues at this park. We've had damage to the park. We've had complaints, driving complaints, we've had even damage. Derek and I worked on a complaint.
There was a fire in the bathroom a while ago.
There's some type, yeah.
It was a year, I think it's.
Yeah, they, somebody tried to light, I mean, it just, it's time. And then we had, oh, another one, I know it's not a big deal, but we had a vehicle we dealt with that was damaged there, if you recall that issue. And it was not in a vehicular accident, if you will, so we had to deal with that, too. So it would really help us out. This is the last place that we don't have cameras. And we need them. It's, sorry, but in 2025 now, everywhere you go has cameras, and I think where there's children, where there's animals, where there's vehicles, where there's, you know, we have the dog park there, we just, I wanted to see the, the the entire area on security camera. And what we did is we got a bid, and I will go into this later, because we're getting them for the bridge. Our vendor that we, we had years ago, EOS, this is all combined and all synced into the police department, so the dispatchers can see this. And that's the important thing, is it's not just a camera that we can go back. They can be proactive if they notice something going on, or headlights in there in the middle of the night, things of that nature, at least they can dispatch a car, so. Anyway, I want to thank the police department for this. Thanks, Margaret, and this is what this is about, and I think it's time that we we be more proactive of the public areas, especially when it has to do with children. And so, thank you again.
Yep, and I just, I want to also mention, thank you to Deputy Chief Brozek. I think he did a great job of getting this, this handled.
Thank you, Todd, for that, too. I was, I saw it. He did a lot of work on this.
No, and I think you both did, so I think it's important, and, you know, I, I think this will be a good thing for everybody.
It's something that we've needed for a while, so, thank you again. Okay. Cameras at Centennial Farm.
No moves.
Oh, no, hold on, hold on. We got that already. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that is number two action item. Motion passed. All right, number three has been deleted. Let's go to number four. Kevin, you have number four. That's the?
AM.
Yes.
How do we say that?
Amiod.
Amiod filter for the wastewater treatment plant approval. The recommendation is based upon a recommendation from the DPS Commission and the Grozeal Township Engineers. The Grozeal Township Board approves the award of a contract to low bidder, Monroe Plumbing and Heating, at a cost of $92,000 plus a 10% contingency, making the total authorization $101,200. The purpose, history, and explanation, the existing unit had developed a series of small pinhole leaks. This unit is the screened final effluent water pressure system, SFE. This was previously reviewed by the Commission and the Board for the purchase of just the filter, and bidding of the installation was to come at a later date. A decision was made to bid both together after additional complications arose with product supply and install issues. As such, this bid covers both the equipment and the installation.
Okay, real quick, we need a second on that.
Second.
Okay. All right, any questions? I guess it would be Derek.
I've got a question.
Go ahead, sir.
I think we do a good job over there in general of getting maximum life out of the parts and pieces that make that plant run. But I noticed here that we thought we would go a certain distance, and then another part of the operation suddenly needed attention also. We're not running it too tight sometimes, are we? The type of use we're getting out of our parts and pieces?
No, I think this was, you know, we got the longevity we should have expected out of the unit.
We wouldn't be subject to a fine, for example, because of something?
Oh, no. No, this, this piece of equipment is less about compliances, as much about, you know, other function within the plant. Basically, what this does is it takes final processed water, and then it reintroduces it into the plant through this screened filter system for use and other processes, so it's not like a pump where we're moving material or anything like that. It's probably a less critical piece of equipment. They were able to, you know, kind of patch it to make sure it functioned okay until we got approvals to, to make it work with the board and the approval process. Otherwise, it would have been an emergency if it was a critical, you know, replacement, but no, I don't think there's any concerns from our end on the, with that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, anything else? Okay, for action item number four, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Number five, dust control. Kevin?
Dust control approval. Dust control approval. Recommendation, based upon a recommendation from the Grozeal Public Service Commission, the town, the Grozeal Township Board approves a second application of dust control with the DND emulsion for the 2025, 2026 budget year at an estimated cost of approximately
Second.
The following is authorization to apply the second treatment during the summer of 2025 of the Dust Bond brand. Dust control material. Dust Bond is the preferred treatment material, as it is effective. Time period is far superior to calcium chloride. The vendor, DND Emulsions, is the only provider of this product, thus the vendor is a single source. The second application would occur in July. Note, the attachment shows invoice. And the delivery date is July. So that is the.
Any questions?
That's it.
No questions? Okay. Action item number five, dust control approval. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried? All right, thank you, sir. Six moved up to one half, and I'll have number seven. "The Grozeal Township Board hereby authorizes the development and distribution of a request for proposals for an entrance audit."
Second. I'm so moved, sorry.
Second.
Yeah, just need a second, thank you. "The following would authorize the development and distribution of an RFP to solicit services for an entrance audit, which would conduct a review of financial transaction bookkeeping for a period of time to be determined by the Township Board. The Board would need direct staff as period of time to include in the request. The focus would be on areas that present the most risk to the township assets. Recommendations would be made to enhance internal controls where weaknesses are identified." Okay, let me kind of explain where this came from. When you have a new board that comes in, it can be a board at the municipal entity level, it can be a board for General Motors, it can be a board for Grozeal Township Schools. When people leave in certain areas and new people come in, I don't want to say they're clueless, but they really don't know of the past financial issues, and there's groups that come in for new boards, and they do an audit separate from our other audit. And this is one of the reasons I want to say that, you know, we hired Teresa recently. When I say recently, is in the past two, oh, I was going to say, year and a half to two years. Okay, I'm close. And she has found numerous issues, nothing, you know, nothing that's you want to call it bad, but she's found numerous areas that needed to be changed. And that's fine. When we came in as this board, one of the things that some of us talked about was this entrance audit, and I contacted a couple of groups, actually five of them total. And I don't know how many you're going to get back, Derek, if we develop this or if we pass this tonight and it moves on. But only one group from, I think they're based out of Southfield, that said they do this and they come in basically blind, not on a direction. Other places come in and you give them direction, and then they move in that direction, and they find what the issue was. So I just appreciate Teresa has changed some things around. She has found some things that maybe should be in a different place, let's just say, or it's just, it's, it's housekeeping, cleaning it up, making it better for all of us, lowering our risk, if you will. And I think that this, what this does is Teresa has her hands full with many things now, and we just took on the bridge. And this has been a full-time job almost. I know it has for Teresa, Derek, and myself. This is, keeps me here, every day here now. And, I mean, that's what I signed up for, and no offense, that's what you guys get paid for. But I think that another set of eyes on something, because she's going to be involved in something else coming in, I don't know when the auditors start coming in, or I want to call it, for lack of a better term, our basic auditors from what?
Yo.
Yo and yo now, is that the?
So our, our auditors were required to have an annual independent audit by the state of Michigan. They're actually starting their field work a week from today
Okay.
for the year-end, in March 31st of, of '25. Looking at what's proposed, I am a little concerned that this may be, some of it might be a duplication of time and resources based on what they do and what you would like done for this entrance audit.
Okay.
During the course of our regular audit, they will talk to and ask questions about internal controls, risk assessments, to myself, to the township manager, to the township supervisor. With a significant, basically a new board, probably the township treasurer, they may ask to speak to other board members. And they will ask questions about, what do you feel is the greatest area, maybe the greatest area of risk? In the course of the audit, there are questionnaires that I have to complete and update every year that do address internal controls for cash receipts, cash dispersments, payroll, IT, budgeting, investments, risks. I want the board to be aware of everything that happens during an audit before perhaps they make a, you make a decision about this and see everything that happens. When they look at, you know, our responses to their questions, they change, they alter their audit procedures based on that. So if there's, there's something that comes up, or something that might be a concern, they will, they may change the direction of some of their procedures. They test our internal controls. They do tests of transactions, they do walkthroughs. So what I've documented for our controls, they make sure that's what we're doing. And is that, is that a, are those adequate internal controls? So, I'm sure there is, there are differences in the approach that this other firm would take. But again, I, I'm concerned about the duplication and also the, the time for my department.
Okay.
No one can, I've been in either an auditor or an audity for most of my career. And there's no way anyone can do an audit without involving the finance department. So we have two weeks of field work that they are, they are potentially going to be out here for two weeks. Then there's all the, the wrap-up and getting everything done to prepare the reports and everything, so I want the new board to be comfortable. And that's the reason that you're doing, and there's reasons why you're doing that, and I respect that. I just want to make sure you're, you're aware of everything of the process that we normally go through.
Thank you.
I have a, can I ask you a question, Teresa? Now, this is, this is somebody that's in the same field as you're in, obviously. Now, I know that you were a supervisor, but unfortunately, when I, I sit across one at the kitchen table, and she's worked on both sides. One as a basic auditor and one as more in-depth. The question was, I posed, is what would be the difference? And she said that, now, this is just, again, I, I'm not throwing you, she doesn't watch, so I'm not throwing her under the bus, but she says that the onion isn't peeled back from the basic audit to this entrance audit. They peel the onion back much further in the entrance audit. And she said, if we as auditors would go in, and I don't know what your opinion is, if it's different, I mean, this is business. If we go in, sometimes, unless we're told to look or pointed in a direction, we don't peel it back and dig in like they do. That's all I'm saying.
Right.
That's all I'm saying. Now, I'm not saying anything bad occurred previous, or any, anything. When I say bad, you know, obviously, I'm not, we're not looking at criminal behavior, we're looking at just what's the township, the risk to the township, and is everything in order? Now, I, you bring up a point, I want the whole board to understand this. Teresa has found things that others haven't found. And, and please, no offense to our auditors, but you found things that they haven't found, and we talked about it. And that's what makes me not so happy with them. But I think it's, we got you because of your background, your experience, and your profession, and what you did. experience in your profession, and what you did. And, and I think, and I praise you for that. So my point is, this is all, when I was running, what we looked at, and what we thought was, because I got some pricing, and when I looked at the pricing, the pricing of this type of audit compared to the type of audit that we have here at the township, now, I don't know if the pricing's the same, but it was less than a third of what we were paying. That's all I'm saying. It's less than a third.
So if you're looking at, if you're looking at last year's cost, last year's cost was significantly elevated.
Yeah, that was high.
Because of the, the change and things that had to be done, I can't explain, I don't know why.
I understand, we talked about it.
But then, then...
I get it, we talked about that.
He made sure they were taken care of now.
Yes, okay.
But, so.
But I just wanted to get your opinion on that. So this is where we're looking at it, and I don't want this to be, what would be the correct term for your department? A, a absolute... I don't want to get into these, for lack of better terms, but I know that you're gonna be tied up. It does involve, now, what the gentleman from the one company told me is, they obtain with our permission, a lot of records, and they take them back. And they're able to, now, they will explain that to you. I know it's, you're not real good at that, you don't like that, I get that. But what it does is it takes away coming to all of you for things when, and I don't know how this works, because I'm not a auditor, but they actually have a way, and it's cheaper for the total bill, to have the permission of opening up some of our records. And obviously, they have a great liability when they take it back to them, you know? There's a huge civil liability if something would occur.
So there's, there's a reason why our auditors, regular auditors come here, because our records are here. We are not paperless by any
Right.
stretch of the imagination. And so that they don't, they don't leave our premise, and they also, and, and there are things that, they, they do have a portal. Things I get done, I load certain things up to the portal. That helps them get, get ready and gets them some of the documents that they need during the, the audit, audit. But looking at source documents, they would have to take our entire vendor, I, I guess I don't know for sure, but in order to, maybe it's just a, it's a sample, but typically, our records don't leave.
I understand, no. I fully get that.
Yeah.
I understand, so we'll have to figure something out if the board votes. So tonight, what we're doing is, is this would just have Derek develop the RFP that would go out. This is not saying, yes, we're gonna do it. Yes, and all it is doing is you'll be developing an RFP for it, correct?
Yeah, the, the way the motion reads is develop and distribute, but if, if we could do this in a way that it was developed, it comes back to you for review, because obviously the finance director has some concerns about the scope, and we might want to, you know, talk about what that scope is.
That's fine.
So there isn't a duplication of, of work. And then make a proposal, I can make a proposal to the board about the duration of time, and then you guys can modify that.
So all we're gonna vote on tonight is that, and a proposal, and the duration, and anything else, but it will come back to the board for the approval. This is only to get it started, for him to do it. That's it, right now. So I don't, you know, and I apologize, maybe my questions tonight were too far into it, but I wanted,
No.
since you were here, to explain and get your thought. Obviously, I...
I actually think this is, this is good timing with our, our regular auditors coming next week, so that you can see the level of what they do and, and the things that they look at. And if any board member wants to speak with them, you don't, that's for, you just have to let me know, for whatever reason. On top of who they may select to, to speak with, and I don't know who that is, I won't know until next week, with it being a, a, a new board.
Okay, so for tonight, all we're doing is asking Derek to develop this. He will come back with us. And, and, and I apologize to the rest of the board, I know we've been in for six months, but taking on the toll bridge and some other issues that we've dealt with, this just was not on the top of the list. And I asked Teresa, because she was finishing up the other one, that I did not want to take you and your staff and put you in a position that didn't focus on what your goal was at that time with the audit, from our own auditors. So that's why I'm, I'm six months late.
Do you know what period of time you're looking at?
You mean in going back?
Yes.
Well, we have some on this board that want to go back a ways, and some on this board that want to go back a few years, so we'll have to talk about that. Okay?
And that will be discussed after Derek comes up.
Yeah, I can put forth a proposal, we can talk about it. I could also talk with professionals in the field that, you know, what would be, you know...
I got, oh, hold on one second. I did get an answer from the gentleman from the Ryman Company, the Ryman Group, and he gave me about what normal going back is. And so we'll just talk about it. But again, for tonight, all we're doing is voting on Derek to move forward with this, and he'll come back to us. Are we good on that? So we understand what we're voting here tonight on.
I'd like to talk about the understanding for a minute here. As I'm listening to this conversation, a number of questions came to mind. Back at the beginning, I was concerned about the timing of when we begin this activity, because Teresa seemed to say that there was an overlap of some sort. I didn't fully understand it. There would be, that overlap, if we could avoid it in some way, might save us money or give us a more accurate result. And one group wouldn't be stepping on the other's toes some way, looking for data. So I'm concerned, when we put this thing together, we, we do it at the right timing. The other point was that Joe made was we had solicitation with requests of five different organizations, and only one came back. And Teresa was commenting about the significance of being able to work with people, and the question is, can you work with this group of accountants? You know, it has to be important that you do, to coordinate.
We don't know who, this is just when I put my feelers out, to see who was out there, Bill. So out of the five, I contacted, only one said they did this type, but we don't know, they might, they might take it on, or at least put in a proposal, so.
Well, I just wanted to...
Yeah, we don't know that, okay.
The, the other thing here is that, the what we ask them to do has to be worked out a little bit better. How, how much do we do, in what directions, and for how long back? We, we need to have some sense of idea there. And so it seems to me that we can say, yeah, we think it's a good idea tonight, but before we nail down something hard and specific, we need to further discuss and explore who, what, when, where, and why, so to speak, on, on what's going on.
Well, you're correct, and that's why he's going to develop it, but we're gonna get that from individuals that come back on the RFP. It's kind of like the engineering RFP. The engineering RFP stated exactly what we needed, and they came back and told us what, what they would be doing for us, because they're the engineers. These people are the forensic accountants.
They'll tell us what we need to do.
And they're the ones that will tell us.
Thanks, Joe.
On the entrance. So I think, I think that's covered, if that makes you feel better.
Yep.
I think we're covered there. So once again, what we're voting on tonight is just the authorization and development. Okay?
Do I have some comments, too?
Go ahead.
Teresa, I may be wrong, but I think it's a SAS 70 report that shows if we give our records to somebody that they have the internal controls and things to protect those records, among other things.
Correct.
I think it's a SAS 70, so in any RFP, we would ask them to produce that, just to get more comfortable with letting anything leave the building. And then, Derek, you said you would change it so that the RFP does in fact come back to us. There was a comment about, like, some things weren't found in a prior audit, but at one of the employers I used to work for, like a Fortune 10 company, when we would audit all the pension payments, because that was just millions and millions of dollars, they always do the sampling. And so it was more the long-term relationship, where they might not find something this year, but could, like in two or three years, because they're grabbing different records each time. So just to think about that. And what I'm wondering is, just to avoid that overlap, like, could we give yo and yo some feedback on what we're looking for, to see if there are some things that they could focus on in the audit? And then, you know, that way we know not to put it in the RFP for this other company. If we're already paying for an audit, to try to leverage that as much as possible, and then for the RFP, include different areas of focus?
That was explained to me. And it was explained to me, and, and please correct me if I'm wrong, there are two total different audits. So one doesn't do what the other one does, and one doesn't do what that one does. And so I understand what you're saying, like, we gotta get our money's worth from yo and yo, I get that.
Yeah, actually from both of them, right.
And, but the point is, that they're in a direction, they're gonna dig in a different direction that yo and yo is digging. Because yo and yo, no offense, they're not digging, they're sampling, but they're not gonna be digging. This company will be digging. So there's a difference. And one company doesn't do what the other one basically does, they're looking, they're going two different directions. Well, no, they're both audits, that's wrong. When I say directions, the explanation to me, from what they do as opposed to a regular auditing firm, is totally different. It's totally different, so. Let's see what we come up with, with, with Derek, and let's move forward, we'll talk to Teresa, and we'll meet again, and we'll see which way we go, because this is not set in stone, it's not. So this is just for him to develop it, okay? If everybody's happy with that, then, then we can move forward from there. And then, as Mark stated, it comes back to us. And if you're comfortable, obviously, whatever it is, you'll, you'll see it.
Yeah, I just, to never really nail down the scope involved, just so that there isn't...
Well, we will, we just, yeah, the scope will come with that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, for number authorization, number seven, action item number seven, to develop and distribution, entrance, audit, RFP. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carried. Number eight, Freedom of Information Act 2525 Fee Appeal. Jameson.
So I move to uphold the fee estimate of the Freedom of Information Act Coordinator, Brian Freel, for FOIA number 25-25.
Second.
So this is regarding the FOIA that we partially approved. It states in the FOIA guidance that the cost of labor to an employee to do the preparation of the FOIA, including redacting information, shall not be more than the lowest paid employee capable of doing so. Well, because of the NDA, Derek is the lowest paid employee capable of doing so. So it comes to a two-hour rate at $59 an hour. So a total of $119.08. The petitioner is requesting that the fee be waived, and you can see the arguments he's made in the attachment.
How much was that again, please?
It is $119.08.
Thank you.
Yep, and it's 59.54 at two hours. Any questions?
You have a question, if, if Bill's done, Mr. Howell's done.
Yeah, I'm not sure, I'm sitting here, I'm not ready to feel comfortable, but go ahead, I...
Okay, that's what I, so we'll talk about most qualified person to, to review this audit, I'm sorry, the FOIA. That has to be a township employee. Wouldn't this be kind of elevated to the level of maybe one of the engineers or our attorney who created the NDA, or maybe a combination of?
So this shall not be more than the hourly wage of the township's lowest paid employee capable of separating and deleting exempt from non-exempt information in this particular instance. So the engineer would likely actually cost more to have it done than Derek would.
Because, but they're, we are, they're contracted by us, so that does not count as, it's actually a Groseal Township employee, but they're a contracted employee.
I guess you could, you could argue that they're an employee.
That's why I'm asking, I just want to be clear that, and no offense to Derek by any means, I mean, this is not, nothing on you at all. I just want to make sure we're actually using the right numbers for the FOIA cost.
Uh, yeah, I mean, it's the lowest cost employee to do it, and Derek costs less than the engineers, so.
Well, and the engineers are an employee.
But if you're...
They're a service provider. But, but because he signed the NDA, he's probably like one of the only employees that can even touch that information. So it's more that he just has access to it.
If you as a board are deeming that he's not capable of doing it, and you feel that only an engineer could, then we would have to charge the engineer's cost for that.
Well, my point of even bringing that up was...
If you're saying he's unable to do it.
I'm not saying...
No, I'm not, and I'm not saying you're pointing the finger, but...
Right, and I'm not. But, I mean, Derek's not an engineer, none of us are. We all signed the NDA as well. That, that was my point. So I was just want to ask, I want to bring it up and ask.
Right, basically, it comes down to the lowest paid person who's capable of redacting this document. If you're saying that's not Derek, then we would have to review who that is and what their hourly is.
Okay.
It's a good point, actually, but he, he won't need to understand all the engineering stuff, but he'll say, oh, that's engineering stuff, I'm gonna redact that. But you're right, if it was, like, explain the engineering stuff, then we would have to go out.
But part of the redaction, or part of the, I guess, request was for the engineering report in whole. And that's not gonna be provided in whole, it's gonna be provided in part, if I understand that correctly.
So the request was all information previously restricted by the NDA relative to the purchase of the toll bridge, including but not limited to past and current profit-loss statement, operational budgets, including personnel costs, maintenance operations, capital expenditures, inspections, engineering and consultants reports. So largely, what he's asking for is the business information of Groseal Bridge Company. The engineering information specifically is probably one of the few things we actually can, you know, discuss openly, because now it's our engineering information, right? We've done our own inspections and whatnot. So...
Right, from the point we purchased it moving forward, that part, I understand correctly. I've saw, I guess I was trying to delineate where he's asking for the entire report, which is sound like to me, before and after. Is it not the case, Brian?
He's specific, yeah, go ahead, Brian.
Right, so you guys voted at the last township board meeting to give him a redacted version of the engineering report.
Correct.
So now we just, so we deem that Derek could do that, and that's the cost, we're giving him two hours of Derek's time to redact that.
Of course, you guys could all vote against this, in which case we would have to give it to him for free.
But are we looking at the, we're looking at the engineering report?
You guys already, because you had the last meeting, the part A of that FOIA, you voted to give him nothing, that you've already made that decision. So you're only looking at the engineering report, and now you're basically deciding, are you going to charge him? And then, what cost are you charging him at?
Well, we're looking at the engineering reports that was looked at by the prior board, right?
Correct.
In making the decision.
Correct.
Okay, so the NDA still stands on that.
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood.
I need to ask some questions.
There are portions of the current engineering report that were considered to be, you know, safety-related, that you wouldn't release that information. So really, that it's going through that report and pulling out any, any information that might contain details about soft aspects of the bridge that could be damaged by somebody that wanted to cause an issue. So that's really what that redaction is about.
But even when you're going through the process, if you have any questions, you're, obviously, you could reach out to either or, the attorney or the judge.
Absolutely, yeah.
So it would still get answered, so never mind, yeah, that, that, that answers my question.
I'd like, can I, is it okay to talk?
Sure.
Okay. I don't totally feel comfortable with my understanding of, of a circumstance where these nondisclosure agreements are in effect. Mark and I had a nice conversation a while back, and I mean, there's certain categories, and there's regulations, enabling legislation to, to give you a guideline for judgment on what is or is not permissible. And I'm of the opinion that that, in most cases, goes along without any trouble. The people who are accustomed to dealing with that know how to slice the pie on that issue, and the private information stays private, and the other stuff is disclosed according to guideline. And here we seem to be having all this trouble, and I'm looking at it, and I'm thinking, this guy, I, I think he's some kind of an engineer, but he, he seems like a decent guy. I, I don't know that I believe he writes that stuff. I, he's a church organist, I believe he plays great music probably, but somebody's doing the research on this.
Well, Bill, we've already voted
Yeah, that's...
to release the information. Now we're voting to either charge him or not charge him.
I would say not charge him, and because you just don't want to aggravate somebody like this and get them going because of some, I, I wouldn't want anything by law that shouldn't be disclosed, we, we have to... I wouldn't want anything by law that shouldn't be disclosed. We have to adhere to that. But we don't need aggravation on this. We've got too many other things going on in our life. And I'm saying, let's make it easy to get it done. And if I've changed my position from before, so be it. But I was, it just didn't sound comfortable to me, the way we're proceeding.
So if we're going to waive the fee, there's a couple of reasons we could do so. One of them is, is that's for the general good of the public. Let's see, I've got them here.
We may waive it if we deem that necessary, or that's a caveat in there, yeah.
Allows for such a waiver when the public information benefits the general public. Or has made other representations that the information would be made available publicly, which I don't think we have regarding NDA information. Or that the information is of great public importance. So if this board feels that this information would be beneficial to the public and of great public importance, or that it would be made available to the public anyway, we could in turn waive the fee. In which case, you would vote no on this motion.
What was the motion again? Was it to give it to him free, or to?
My motion was to uphold the fee estimate of one hundred.
Okay, to apply it to him.
Of nineteen dollars and eight cents. Which, all things considered, this is actually a really great fee. Because I think it's A, going to take Derek substantially longer than two hours.
Absolutely will.
And B, we didn't include any of the other costs typically associated with FOIAs.
If I may just add something to that. And I apologize if I'm being redundant, because I had to step out a second. Derek came to me and said, Joe, here's the issue. He says, this is gonna take me a lot more than two hours, but unfortunately, I'm the highest paid, or the lowest paid individual that can do this work. And he is one of the higher paid, obviously, in the entire township, with only one being higher paid than he is. And I said, well, Derek, how long is it gonna take you? He said, this is gonna, it's gonna be hours. At least I'm gonna spend six hours on this. But I thought I'd only charge the gentleman two, because I was trying to, and then that stings you there. He's trying to do what's right, and he's trying to give the gentleman a break. And by only charging him two hours because he's such a higher paid employee. Now, we know that some of the others, and no offense, Brian, but I don't think you have the capability to go through this and do it correctly. I'm sorry. I mean, that's not, you're just not an engineer. I get it. You have a job, and it's separate. Derek has the most knowledge of engineering within the township. We could give it to our engineer and pay triple, or our attorney, and pay quadruple almost per hour to have it done. But Derek's coming to me and saying, it's gonna be at least six hours worth of work. So now if we, if we come to him with this, it doesn't matter what we do. As you can see, we're always gonna get it back in our face. And that's just, that's okay. That's what we signed up for. I have no problem with that. You're always gonna get who disagree, and that's the American way, and that's a beautiful thing. So my point is Derek tries to do the right thing by helping out. And then when we do this, instead of just going by the straight rules and straight amount and dealing with it, you know, we kind of get stung. But it's up to you guys what you want. This will eventually go out later, but it will be redacted. We're not giving him. And if you want to get the whole thing, then you're gonna have to go to circuit court, and that's fine. And I'll let a judge decide if you want one hundred percent of, let's just say, the engineering report. Or anything else. In twenty-six, the NDAs then are over. And I forget what month in twenty-six, but a lot of that stuff will be out. This will be later when we get the bridge commission. And I don't know if you touched on that, and again, I apologize if I'm being redundant. We're gonna have the bridge commission up and running in a couple months. And we'll be seeing what information is gonna be going out on the website, and what Brian's gonna be putting out. So I guess it's up to you as a board to say, you know, how much of a stand do you want to take on this issue? Will it all be eventually put out there? No, because it can't. And again, if now, unless a judge, and I get it, I have no problem if this goes to circuit court, and a judge says, Grosse Hill Township, I want you to give them everything you got, including the kitchen sink. Well, then we abide by it. That's the way, that's the way it goes. It's only business. But the point will be right now is, you know, and a couple other things. I wish that the people that do appeals here would come so we could at least talk to them. I'm not trying to throw this in your face at all, anybody that's done this in the past, but when you don't apply, I'm sorry, when you don't show up for the appeal, there's case law that states we don't have to deal with it or listen to it, and we can just not have it because the person didn't show up. We're not gonna do that. We didn't do it on the first time. I sure would like to talk to him face to face. This is not questions of why you're doing this, because those questions, they're irrelevant, and you can't even ask them anyway, and I wouldn't. That's not the reason. I don't care why you want this, but there's certain things that we, you have to try and get what you actually want. I think Brian did a lot on the phone that way. If I, if I'm correct, Brian, that you spoke with the gentleman?
Uh, we had a lot of email back and forth.
Oh, there was not phone conversations? I'm sorry then. I apologize. I misspoke. So, and emails, a lot of the true meaning, have you ever sent an email and it just isn't what you want to say sometimes? And that's why I wish I would have a chance to at least speak to this gentleman, to ask him, so we can pinpoint it, maybe narrow down what you're actually looking for. So, and that doesn't happen either. But I have no problem. He's not here tonight. He wasn't here before. I'm not gonna ask that this be not heard because of it. I set the agenda. I put it on the agenda. I kept it. But I guess if we're all gonna play by the rules, then how much rules do we want to play by? That's the point, so. And as Jameson said, if we vote no on it, then it would be to no cost, right, to the gentleman. If we vote yes, we're upholding the amount that is on your paperwork. So I just wanted to add those couple things, and again, you know, I have no problem. Either way, it's gonna eventually go out, but there's work that needs to be done, and it's gonna take a lot of work. And it's a whole lot more than what Derek came up with as a fee to him. It is, it's a whole lot more. I don't know, Derek and I, you know, I trust you, but I don't know if six hours is even enough. And because there's twelve hundred pages or something that you're gonna have to go through.
It will take a little bit to make sure that it's redacted properly.
The, when I was running as a candidate for treasurer, this issue came up, the issue about the bridge and putting the information out about the bridge and the costs and the engineering and what has to be done. All of that has, that came out at a meeting that was held at the VFW Hall. And one of the things I said there was, as soon as this, as soon as we own the bridge, I would support putting all the information that we were not able to put out. I would support putting that out. And I think that it, as a having said that, I believe that as much information should be provided to the taxpayer who bought the bridge and is paying for the bridge, all the information that we can give them, as soon as we can give it to them, we should do that. That's only fair if it was in public business. If you're a shareholder or an owner, you get a annual report. You get a, prior to the purchase, you would get all kinds of information that we were not able to get because of the NDAs. And I, I think that all of that information that we can provide, we should provide, and we should take it and put it on the front, put it right out in front on our webpage so that people can go in and see exactly what's going on. There's, you know, people have come up with conspiracies about why and how, and putting out all the information is helpful. And I appreciate the time and effort that has to go into it, but I also appreciate the cost and time that the taxpayer. I think they deserve, we all, the taxpayer deserves to know as much as possible. And I don't say this to grandstand, but how much is it?
Hundred and eighteen dollars.
It's a hundred and eighteen dollars. I'll, after I check with my wife, of course, I'll pay that. I, I don't think it's a large amount of money, and I'm sure she will agree.
So under that argument, Kevin, what you're saying is we should waive the fee because we would make this information publicly available?
I think we should waive the fee. I said that to taxpayers before I was elected. I ran on that. I think it's a reasonable request. I think we also have to think about, if we don't provide that information, what's the cost if we go to court? What are we going to have to pay in legal fees? And, you know, all of that. I just think it's a, you know, we have a, I think we have an obligation to put out as much information as we possibly can, as soon as we possibly can. I, I, I think that's a reasonable request.
I think.
Thank you.
One, one thing, just what Kevin said. That's the reason I said that. Eventually, I know, Brian, we're gonna have a portal. We're gonna be putting things out. The question is, once we get the commission, and we're still gonna have to redact it, we're still gonna have to. So eventually, it will go out there on our website. We will be putting as much as we can. And again, we can't put everything out there, but as much as we can, we'll be putting out there. So, and that's the reason I brought that up. So you're gonna pay, you pay now if you want it, you want it later. It's gonna take some time.
Well, if we're gonna put it all out there anyway, redacted version, then we must waive the fee.
Yeah, I have, well, I have no issue voting no.
Okay.
Yeah, that's my point.
Yep.
So really, really quick, though. Really quick. We have an RFP sitting out there from H and H. If anybody looked through it or digested it, it is basically a much better roadmap to the information that you're looking for. So to me, and again, this is my personal opinion. This is just at this stage, asking for this, I would be shocked if anybody was gonna actually read through it. This is just to make a point. Because if you really, if your real goal was to actually look at the engineering data, then you would actually go to the available for free RFP from H and H that's been sitting on the township site for months now? Yes. So that's the only point I want to make.
I get that. I understand where you're going with it. It's just that, as I stated to Derek earlier, there's individuals that are gonna do things a certain way, and the communication will be.
Totally agree, totally agree.
The communication, to me, will be a certain way. And sometimes that communication isn't exact in that certain way either. So you're right, there's reasons, but the, the key is the reason why isn't a correct question. It's not a valid question, and it's not even a legal question. And you're right, if you want it, the RFP would show a whole lot more, and it would give you a roadmap. And I've given people those roadmaps to find what they want that they can't get from the NDA, actually. And I've given them the correct roadmap. So I get that, but unfortunately, right now, if we're going to get something that comes to us, we have to look at it as, at the face value. And Mickey, you had something before we.
I do.
We vote then.
Two points. Brian, I understand that you're not qualified, and I think you're okay with that, right? I think you're happy. As far as looking at this FOIA, I know it can be a pain that you guys have to go through. Like, this is probably one of the hardest parts of your job, right? But we have to do it, and because the exceptions are for the general good of the public, and it's great public importance, and there's, right now, nothing more important than the bridge. Everybody is interested in it. Everybody was asking questions. And they were coming to the meeting, and they kept asking over and over again for that information. I do think this is one that we should waive a hundred dollar fee for, and just put it out there. Anybody can see it. I also agree with Margaret, a hundred percent, but unfortunately, we can't say, hey, no, your FOIA request doesn't make sense for this reason. So I'll be voting, you know, with that in consideration.
I'd like to add one thing to this right now, just a word of caution. Kevin, I know you mean well, when you volunteer to pay a hundred and nineteen dollars. But it's possible, when you do something like that, that another day on another way, somebody else says, well, you gave him one. Well, you can't, you gotta give me one. You set a precedent that leaves your door open. And I've actually, in my work experience, encountered someone who got into that kind of trouble with his employee benefits. I know you mean well. But I would, I would prefer that we take a position, we either charge or don't charge, and then remain with consistency. There seems to be an element in this particular type of request, it's a little more gray than other types of requests for information. But be careful in what we give away. I believe that financial information that the bridge had while it was under Paul Smoak's ownership, we are not allowed to do that, and we could get ourselves sued by Smoak. If I'm right on that, we, they have to understand that there's certain things we can't give them. We're not allowed to. And then when we give them the information we do, we can point to what we did and why we did it by citing in the law what it says about financial data or whatever. And I think it would be wise to consider approaching that answer with that technique.
All right, thank you, Bill. All right, for, are we all set? I think we've all kind of given our two cents here, which. So number eight, the Freedom of Information Act. So I want to make sure this is correct. And Jameson, please, correct me if I'm wrong. For action item number eight, if we vote aye, we uphold the fee. If we vote no, then the gentleman would get the FOIA without the fee.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Four. Action item number eight, Freedom of Information Act, fee appeal, twenty-five twenty-five. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So I'm sorry, is that Mark?
Yeah, myself.
Mark and Margaret? Okay, then all opposed, say nay. Or no, nay. Okay, so it's other five. You got that? Brian, okay.
Could we do that as a voice or a individual vote?
We got Margaret and Mark are the ones that was easy.
Okay.
And then Kevin, Joe, Jameson, Mickey, Bill are yes. Is that okay? I mean.
Perfect, thank you. Nope, that's perfect.
Okay. Just want to make sure you believe me.
I believe you.
Okay. Action item number nine, police commission appointment. Margaret, please.
Get to it. I'd like to recommend the township board appoint Mark Maluski to fill the vacancy on the police commission.
Second.
The Grosse Hill Police Commission requests that the township board appoints Mark Maluski to the Grosse Hill Police Commission. This appointment is to fill a vacancy due to the recent resignation of Commissioner Chairperson Anderson. Mr. Maluski's term will expire in twenty thirty-one. So we had seven applicants, and we chose to interview all of them. I know that I had a request to ask him to appear here and provide his background and credentials. I chose not to ask him to do that, because we've had a lot of new commission members come through, and I've not seen anybody else do something like that. And I didn't feel that that was the appropriate thing to do. But we interviewed all of our applicants. We then had a second round with our, the candidates we felt were the best fit. Mr. Maluski expressed his interest and ability to support the commission through social media, and he had, he's a background in school administration, he's done union work, and we just felt he would fill that gap. So I would just ask that he gets approved today. And if there's any questions, please let me know.
Anything for Margaret?
I would like to say that I was the person that asked to have the, Mr. Maluski. I did ask to have, I actually was an invitation to the new commission member to come introduce himself. I wouldn't know him to see him. Ask him to come and say hello to the board, and let the board say hello to him. And as a courtesy to the community, they will also see who the person is. I think that as trustee Shelton mentioned, we have not have had other commission members come in front of the board. I think that that might be something that we can look at in the future to, so that the community can see who, who is being recommended as a courtesy to the board and to the individual, so that we can know who we're voting for. And I think that that, it's neighborly thing to do. So, and I appreciate that you said, you had how many candidates?
We had seven candidates.
Seven. I appreciate that seven people wanted to be on the commission and were willing to be interviewed. And I hope that in the future, we can do that and be able to see, see those interviews recorded on TV. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Kevin. Anything else for Margaret?
I just wanna point out that we followed policy, that study sessions, so interviews, we, we do follow that, and we choose to not put our, our volunteer candidates through a TV interview process. They, the second round, after we got through the sevens, when we had our, our two candidates we felt were the best fit, that was an open study session. So, you know, that's where anybody is welcome to come and sit in. And I personally, again, I, I don't agree with having interviews televised. I just, for many reasons, I don't need to go into, but that, this is how we handled it, and just so everybody is aware, we followed policy.
Okay, thank you, Margaret. So Police Commission Appointment for Mr. Maluski. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Okay, thank you. Number ten, I'll take that one. Action item number ten is to move the Township Board interview five people for the upcoming Bridge Commission.
Second.
Where this came up from is we got a total of eleven applications, and I just picked the number in the middle, just to see how many we wanna do. We can always change the amount, obviously, on the commission. We can change the number if you don't like the five interviews. But I just put that down to get an action item on tonight. And anybody that hasn't handed in their score, what we did is, we, we gave all eleven applicants to each of us, and I had them score one to eleven, and then we come up with an aggregate number, which we don't have yet, because there's a couple still out. And that aggregate number, obviously, the lowest one is better, because we're ranking them one through eleven. So if you get a bunch of ones, twos, threes, fours, fives, obviously, you're better than the six, seven, eight, nine, or ten. So that's how we're gonna do that. That, I think that is the fairest way to do it. And the question tonight is only, how many do you, as a board, how many would you like to interview? When we get this aggregate number, so.
When we get the aggregate number?
Correct.
Was there any discussion on the actual number you brought up?
Would.
As far as how many to interview?
No, I just put five, because it's in the middle, and if you'd like to change, yeah, it's just, we can come up with something different right now on this action item. I just put five. I could've put any number down, just to get it on paper tonight.
No, I understand. I guess.
Oh, go ahead, Mark, I'm sorry.
In my opinion, going through these applications and interviewing people before for other positions at various different entities I've been with, you really can't get a true feel for the individual applying without speaking to them and going through the interview process. So just, it's my opinion.
Okay.
That we should actually interview all of them, with the split up in two different days, two sections, then we do it.
Okay.
This is an important topic. It's a hot topic for the island. It's important to everybody here. And I just don't want to overlook anything or anybody, or any particular candidate. That's just my opinion. I think we should look at all of them. Interview all of them, then come up with a number system to get a board after we talk to everybody. That's how I feel.
Okay. Anyone else? Go ahead, Mickey.
So, so Joe, that's why I reached out to you today, curious to see what we were gonna do, but, so what you're suggesting, like, do you mean, and I have to give you the ratings still, but like, say you got all seven of us that said, yes, there's a particular individual we wanna interview, then that person has seven points, right?
If you think it's number one best out of all eleven, they would have a total of seven aggregate score, which is gonna get them an interview.
Okay. And so.
He or her.
So if we were to say five, but then a couple people had the same amount of points, could we come back later and say, well, maybe six?
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Anything you'd like, yeah.
Okay.
Just threw five in to get it on paper.
Okay. And then, looking at them, we had some really qualified people, but some of them, I believe, go to Florida, and they can't attend the meetings in person, and for some reason, I thought I heard we cannot have legally have the Zoom calls. So I think that may rule out some.
There's a legal issue after COVID. COVID brought in the legal issue, and then they ended the legal issue, believe it or not, for meetings.
Yeah. The only reason you would be able to attend remotely is for military service.
Like Jameson, when he's gone, or he's training somewhere, and, you know.
So to me, like, the ones that say, hey, I go to Florida from January through March, they kinda rule themselves out. But there were a couple that said, hey, you know what, though, I fly back all the time for meetings, then I would think that they could still be in it. But looking at that, I think there's some that will automatically come out, just because they're not available.
Okay. Whatever you feel is.
Yeah, I think you can knock four or five people out of there pretty rapidly, just looking at availability and whatnot.
Well, may I say that we, on the DPS Commission, we do have, in fact, the chair goes to Florida. I don't know how many months he's there, but he does fly back specifically for meetings, DPS meetings. And I think that, having looked through the resumes, there are candidates that do travel and are uniquely qualified for this particular job. I think it would be interesting to interview all of them and see what their thoughts are. And it might be a possibility of having a, maybe alternate or backup people that aren't commission members, but, you know, they might be interesting to have as.
Well, we can also change the amounts too, and I don't wanna get too far into this, but.
Yep.
If you feel there's, let's just say, five absolute excellent candidates, we can change it to five. Not interviews, I'm talking about the, the number.
The number of.
Citizens.
Of citi, that's, that's very interesting.
Yeah, and that's fine, if that's what you guys feel on that. Now, let's just, let's stick today to, to what do you feel, is there a consensus on the board, one way or another, of, we have two nights then? I mean, we'd have to get six and five in, or we could have two, I don't know. Derek, we did this before, and I'm, I'm not sure if you guys ever did this at the township, but we actually did have two interview committees that brought people forward, and a couple of people were on the same committee that were gonna be there. Like, me and you are both gonna be there. So unfortunately, we'd have to go to both, but have you ever done that here?
Yeah, not that I recall.
Okay.
Yeah. We could set it up where, you know, you do five one night and six the next, or something like that.
Is this what I'm hearing?
Even if it's the following week.
But you got some that are saying, like, hey, I can only do Zoom calls, so before we come together for two nights, couldn't we reach out to the ones, like, a couple said, hey, I go to Florida, but I'll fly back for the meeting, so I'm interested in interviewing them. But the one that's like, I, I can only do Zoom calls, or I'll be in Florida and won't be returning, can't we just chuck with them and say, hey, we're, we're here, and you're not really available all year? So we'll.
How many are we, are you looking at to interview then? What is your, what's the general consensus here, the board tonight, about the total number?
Just looking at the qualifications, I was thinking five, based on qualifications.
For interviewing?
And availability. Yeah, that they seem that they would be available for the.
Yeah, I'm with Mickey. I, I don't think, I looked through all the applications. I'm very grateful that people are very interested in the, the Bridge Commission, but I think there's clearly frontrunners, and there's clearly people that aren't gonna work out. And I don't know that it's really necessary to interview people that aren't going to be available to attend meetings.
Okay, so how, how about we do this, 'cause we can take a vote, or actually, a straw poll, 'cause we're voting on this, we're making a decision. Mickey, what's a number you're looking at? Remember, we tried to.
I would say.
Bargain with the other issue we had last, a couple meetings ago?
Yeah, I would say five, but we're willing to change that, like, maybe the one guy that says I'm in Florida for three months, who's like a civil engineer, maybe he comes back and says, hey, I'll jump on it.
Should we see who our, the aggregate score comes out to be then first?
I, I would like to do that, and availability.
Bill, are you into five?
Knock out anyone you can.
Right now, I'm not ready to make a decision, because there's something I don't understand. Everybody, I've fallen off the horse, maybe.
Well, we'll get you back on the horse here. What's, what can I help you with there, sir?
Are we talking, when we talk about having a Zoom meeting, interviewing people, or whether they're there for the meetings during the whole year?
Yeah, you can't have a Zoom meeting anymore. It's not valid under the Open Meetings Act.
They can't attend the meetings, the routine meetings.
The regular commission meetings.
So on Zoom.
Okay, just a minute, I gotta stop, I'm still not clear.
Okay. There is no Zoom, forget Zoom. There can't be any Zoom meetings anymore.
Let's, let's go back with me, just a second. The first thing we're gonna have is a meeting with these people and talk to them.
This is the interview, correct.
Right. I'm assuming that's gonna be one-on-one, as opposed to having anything that would be on a phone or on the.
It's gonna be more like seven on one.
It could be four, or five, or six on one, but go ahead.
Okay, now, that, that I understand, but if we're talking about having a, a situation, Bill Kostic is who you were talking about.
Right.
There is, he's darn good. I, I, I can't say enough about him any day of the week. And there's a couple of other people on that list that I'd put in Bill Kostic's shoes. I would just be as comfortable with them on a Zoom meeting if it is legal.
Can't, can't, forget Zoom. You can't have Zoom. Zoom, no good.
How about, how about?
No Zoom.
You can't hold the.
Seven candidates, Bill. Could we do seven?
Interview seven?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, is that okay?
I'm, I'm good. You want seven? I'll, I'll take seven. Would you take seven candidates we interview?
Yeah, I.
I'd take five and keep it to a night, but we can always expand it more, but if you guys could go back and say, hey, are, are you willing to fly here, and if they're not, take them off the list.
We had people that said they're willing to fly, at least two of them.
Yeah, and I included them in the five, when I was looking at them, but there's several people that.
I've talked to that.
No, next week. No, or we can even delay the interviews. We were gonna do them next week, but we gotta figure out, we need two nights. Mark and, I'm sorry, Kevin, you, you were gonna say something?
She's on with yes.
I like the idea of interviewing everybody, even if they're not, they, they do have the credentials, even if they're not able to be here. Might be nice to have, keep them in the, keep them abreast of what's going on.
Margaret, where are you at?
I align with five, but I'm a man of seven, and we.
Okay. How about this? We did this last time, before, we were going back and forth, total numbers. Some want five, some want more, some say there are a few that probably wouldn't be picked. How about we do, would you guys be agreeable if I, if we change this? Who seconded it? Seconded it?
I did.
Jameson. It has to be agreeable to you on the second, if I change it to, how about, just so we get something going, seven? Are we in agree?
So does that mean it's two nights, but a one?
One long name.
Okay, that's fine. Mark doesn't want seven, but would you guys, you were agreeable to five, how about seven to give us more?
You know what, I think it's just, I think half of them are gonna drop out when you say, hey, I need you to be able to commit, I agree, to the meetings.
Well.
And we have a rule, like, what's the percentage of meetings you have to attend?
Twenty-five, seventy-five.
There's already people not meeting that.
Yeah.
Twenty-five.
Already people not meeting that.
I get it, it's how many you can miss.
No, right, that's what I'm saying. You can miss twenty-five, you make seventy-five.
Right.
Right.
This is the percentage you're referring to.
Yeah, this is just a question of how many do you gotta make. You gotta make the seventy-five, you're only allowed twenty-five to miss. All right.
Would you please say again how many candidates we have?
Eleven.
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 Is it legal for these people to talk on the telephone, or you can't communicate away from the house?
You must be present in the boardroom.
In a meeting. Okay. Well, I mean, we gotta get this going.
I'll vote.
Wait, can we do twelve, 'cause mine came back? I mailed it in, and it came back.
Oh, then we have twelve now.
Yeah, I forgot the stamp.
Oh, gotcha, that's fine. Then we have twelve. What about seven of the twelve? That we do our aggregate score of?
I mean, I prefer five, I'm willing to compromise to seven. It sounds like we've got, that's pretty fair.
Yeah, I, I mean.
I mean, I'm gonna go with whatever you guys vote for, but I got so much going on in all these different commission meetings into.
I get it.
You got people that can't even be here seventy-five percent of the time.
Well, we have to get this going.
And some of them clearly don't, like, we were really, really lucky that some of these people have bridge experience and civil engineering, and, like, they are just, oh my God, we couldn't have picked, you know.
We're a lucky community.
All right.
We really are. So, I mean, I'll do whatever you guys say, but it's a.
I'm sorry, interrupted.
It's just, um.
Well, I need to get a motion done and voted on tonight, either way, so.
Can we? We have three supporting five, so.
Can we find out if the people that said that they are in Florida, can we find out if they are willing to be here? And if they're not, that's a, that's an issue. Seven seems like a good number.
So you're saying we, we don't vote on this tonight?
Well, we.
We don't vote on the amount tonight, is that?
Well, we gotta vote on it tonight, we gotta move forward.
Yeah, I wanna get something at least set, in case we, we can change it.
Can we table the motion for?
No, but I'd rather not table it, Bill, because we can change it.
Okay.
Tabling it will, will not do what we're trying to achieve tonight.
So if everybody's put them in order, and they've done their assignment, can we vote on your five? Or do we wanna vote on seven, and you're amending, doing a friendly?
I'll amend it to seven to be more amicable to the rest of the board. I have no problem with that.
Okay, then let's do that.
Okay, Brian, Jameson, Jameson, do you?
Oh, okay. Seven's fine.
And do we, we don't have to vote, like, on that change, do we?
No, no, if you guys agree.
He just agreed, everybody agrees, okay.
But are we voting on this, are we voting just the number, and then we're giving you our rank of them?
Yeah, that's separate.
For the points, that's separate.
That's separate. All we're voting on tonight on this is to move the Township Board interview seven people for the Bridge Commission, period.
Okay.
Okay? Do we need another second? Are we good? And then we can just vote, Brian?
You're good.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay. One, uh, Mark's nay. Okay, thank you. All right. We have no discussion items. I think we discussed enough tonight. Jameson, clerk's report.
I'm just kidding, I'm ready.
That's fine.
You weren't even looking at me. So Island Fest was the big event coming out of REC, end of last month, beginning of this month. So first and foremost, I wanna thank the REC Commission. There wasn't a day or hour. I think that there wasn't at least two or three members of the REC Commission out there watering plants, hauling drink tickets around, helping lost people get to their cars. So it was a really big endeavor, and they did a, a great job. Talking, so we don't have all the figure, facts and figures back yet, but talking with the folks that have been to a couple of Island Fests, it was very well attended, quite possibly one of the best-attended Island Fests. Especially on Saturday, we had a little bit of a rain on Friday, but there were still people out there. They were just standing under the tents instead of on the tarmac, so. The Carnival reported that it had exceptional returns, which means a, a lot of people came out in road rides and bought tickets. I think it was probably the best fireworks show we've had in a long time. That's what I heard from a lot of members of the community, and I watched it myself, I, I would concur. And we had fifty-nine individuals participate in the auto show, which was substantial. And there was three awards given. I don't have the, I do have the names. Let me get the names real quick. I'll, I'll tell you about the awardees, 'cause it's kinda cool. Hold on, almost there. Sorry. Yeah, I apparently get too many stupid texts.
There's somebody that has it already out in the audience.
That's, that's my wife.
Always like that, you know?
Yeah, thanks.
Way to, way to show them.
Way to bail me out. All right. So there's three awards given, People's Choice Best in Show and Chairman's Choice for the most unique vehicle. So the Best in Show was voted on the Groseal, or voted by the Groseal Township Fire Department as Cassandra King with her nineteen sixty-eight. King with her nineteen-sixty-eight Shelby GT350, which was a extremely cool and well-appointed car.
Nice.
The, uh, People's Choice voted by, uh, you know, little slip of paper, people slipped in the box. I think a couple of folks voted more than once, but that's okay, um, was Tony and Diane Merzarek, who, uh, I, I believe it was a nineteen-fifties Triumph, um, two-seater convertible, very cool British car. I was kinda surprised the people picked it. They have good tastes. And then the Chairman's Choice was Cameron Korteluski for his BMX bike. Um, so the kid showed up, he was eight years old, he showed up with his BMX bike. It was all cleaned up. He parked it right next to the motorcycles. Um, so congratulations to the winner, especially Cameron, for his first big auto show win, so.
Nice.
And then, uh, Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee will meet on the nineteenth. Um, we are currently working on bike trail assessments. We know that there's some sections that are not as good as other sections. Um, so we're putting together a plan to begin, um, to look at making repairs to those sections and hopefully doing things that just kind of extend the longevity, right? That, that low-cost, low-hanging fruit type stuff, um, that can keep the trails in good working condition for an extended period of time, so. And that's all.
All right, sir, thank you. Kevin? I've, I've got a question. I've got a question before you go. On the toll bridge revenue expenditure report, um, is that, that is separate or?
Let's, let's do that, uh.
Is that Theresa?
Could we do that right now? That would be, uh.
Do you want to give me the normal report and then I'll do this, or do you want to do this first?
Whatever, which would you like? I, I'm excited to hear.
Can we do this?
I'm, I.
Can we, Theresa, could you go first, please?
Yes, please.
Ladies first.
The, perfect, thank you.
Okay. I think I greased you up enough last time. All right. Thank you.
Can I do a little introduction that, uh, the, uh, Finance Director, the information that was put into the budget was really put together by the Finance Director about the bridge. And, um, this is the, this is really the first, um, report that we've had on the bridge financially since we've owned it. And thank you to the, uh, Finance Director for being here this evening to do that. And take it away, please.
My pleasure. Um, so in the board packet was our standard revenue and expenditure report for the Toll Bridge Fund. It is a separate fund. All the, all the funds that are collected go directly into that fund. So what I did to hopefully try and simplify this a little bit, um, is I ran, ran separate reports for the revenue versus the expenditures. So this report is as of May thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five, and it shows total revenue of one million, three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for the two months that we have owned the bridge. So we had one month with the free bridge open and one, in three weeks with the free bridge closed. Um, it's under revenue, but the figures that you see, it represents actually all the money that we've collected. The way the Toll Bridge operations go is that there are actually three buckets that the money can go into. It's not recognized as revenue until people actually cross the bridge. So we get revenue for tag deposits. They have to pay a deposit for the tags of twenty-eight dollars. That's actually a liability for the township, because at any time, they can turn in their tag and we owe that money back to them. So that's in a separate account. There's also the Bridge Pass deposits, which represent when your credit card gets charged sixty dollars to load your credit card. It goes into that account first, and it doesn't get recognized as true revenue until you actually cross the bridge. Because at any time, you can have money on your Bridge Pass and you can turn in your Bridge Pass and we owe that money back to you. So that's also a liability until the crossings actually happen. So because of the, we've had some challenges with the Bridge Pass Company. They made a major change in their software at the time that we purchased the bridge. Um, and so we, and with the bridge closure, putting all those funds into those, the proper three buckets has not, has not been done yet. We are still waiting from the Bridge Pass Company to get the proper reports that we need for the Director of Operations at the, at the bridge to do what she would normally do on a daily basis, because there's a lot of work involved with credit cards and making sure we reconcile from the time that credit card is swiped to the top, to it goes to the clearinghouse, to it goes to our bank account. So we're not, we still are waiting patiently for them to give us the reports that we need to be, be able to do this. So for now, just all the money that has come in is sitting in these, these two accounts.
Theresa, what were the three? I'm sorry, you go ahead. No, I was just gonna say, what were the three buckets? Again, I understand you have liabilities and then you have.
So we have, we have, we have liabilities for the tag deposits, the, the old twenty-five dollars and the new twenty-eight dollars.
Uh-huh.
Um, we have Bridge Pass deposits, which is the actual money that gets put on their Bridge Pass.
The sixty bucks that keeps hitting.
Uh, you're right.
So are those two different accounts?
Those are two different.
Okay, that's the three then.
Um.
Okay. And then the third is just the revenue when they cross.
So this is the balance sheet, just so, this shows the assets and liabilities of the bridge, of the Toll Bridge. Um, and so the two lines that I highlighted, those are those two liabilities. The top one is the tag deposits, the bottom one is the actual money that's on the Bridge Pass to be able to use for crossings. And the amounts that you see there, those were the amounts that were received from the prior owner for what the balances were at the time of closing. And then the third bucket is the actual revenue, which we earn as people cross the bridge.
Okay, thank you. Let me.
And that third one could be from cash or credit?
Correct. Any of them could be for cash.
And it's separate, obviously. One goes to, uh.
Right.
Called Fi, uh.
I'm sorry.
Not Pfizer, what's it called?
Um.
Pfizer.
Right, Pfizer, right.
But it's Pfizer, the, the, the credit card.
Clover.
So we actually have three, right now, we have three different clearinghouses, so.
Yeah, so Fiserv is the company that's utilized to process, uh, uh, credit card payments uh for your auto debit to reload your card with sixty dollars. Clover is used for the deposits and then Chase Payment Tech is utilized in the booth itself. So we actually have three different vendors, not by choice, but out of necessity for, you know, um, transition. Eventually, I think we'll consolidate those, but for right now, to make sure that operations, you know, are smooth, we had to diversify some of that, so. And to piggyback on Theresa's comments also, not to complicate things further, but, um, when the township purchased the bridge, there were also bridge tag deposits in an account, um, which could come due, like Theresa mentioned, reliability. So that was cash already, um, taken in by the bridge company, which then got transferred to the township, as well as the cash on prepaid tolls. So, um, while the bridge was being used and has been used since we've owned it on April first, there has been, um, a combination of, uh, um, the utilization of prepaid passes prior to the purchase by the township, as well as new pass, um, passes purchased under your bridge card after April one. So that is an additional, you know, um, layer to this, that you have old money, you know, old bridge comp, bridge company money that was transferred to us and now new money that we have to keep track of. So, um, there's a lot of moving parts to this.
When we ask you to do things, we really need to keep in mind what, I mean, you have your hands full right now with that bridge.
So fortunately, um, Maureen, the Director of Operations at the, at the Toll Bridge, she had a very good system for keeping track of all these credit card transactions, on top of all her other duties on, under the Groseal Bridge Company with doing all the other bookkeeping. Um, we, I've seen her reconciliation sheets. They are accurate, they're foolproof. Um, but she needs reports out of the various systems in order to track everything properly. Um, and so she's spending a lot of time, the, just working with the volume of credit card transactions that we have, that's, that's most, could be most of her time in a given day. Um, she, she also, um, we set up Brink's to pick up the cash and the checks that are at the Toll Bridge. They do come twice a week on Tuesdays and Thursdays.
Well, you don't really probably wanna say when they're picking it up, right?
I'm sorry?
We probably don't wanna say when they're picking up.
Oh, well, I mean, they'll see, anyone can see the Brink's truck, so, yeah, yeah. So that, no one's going to the bank.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, also on the revenue, it's not recorded yet. You know, my staff has been very occupied with getting things ready for the auditors next week. In the months of April and May, we have an interest in our Michigan Class account of, um, just over fifty-six thousand dollars in those two months. So any money that we're not using on a daily basis that we're gonna be using for engineering fees, they're in the, the Michigan Class account, which has a higher interest rate to, for, um, additional income. And then on the.
I'm sorry, Theresa.
I'm sorry.
I, I was gonna ask, it looks like this is an Excel. Are we not using?
No.
No, is this ClearGov?
No, actually, this is BSNA.
Okay.
That's our accounting software.
So are we gonna, are we going to do this in ClearGov, this?
Um, it will eventually be in, in ClearGov, yes.
Okay. Do we have timing on that, or?
I have not had the opportunity. I've been through some trainings.
Okay.
And that's, um, so after my audit, that was gonna be my focus.
Okay.
So.
So, so just to give us reasonable expectations, and I understand Bridge has just taken over everything, but like ClearGov, can we, will we start getting like our five-year reports later in the year, you think, or?
Yeah, but the, the goal is to get everyone familiar with using it as soon as, as soon as I can, I can get to, to that project, um, and, and give them the rights to look at things online. I have uploaded, um, five years of, sent them five years of historical information. I've sent them, um, the, uh, the, the year we're being audited, I sent them preliminary numbers. Those, once we have our final audited numbers for March thirty-first of twenty-five, they'll get that. They have the budget for this year. It's, it's just getting everyone, um, trained and added to the program and start working with it. So.
Thank you.
So this page shows the expenditures that we've, we've incurred in the first two months, other than purchase, the actual purchase of, of the bridge. Uh, so we have, um, we've done a lot in two months to take over this bridge. Uh, if you look at the, probably about a third of the way down, the Bridge Passes, forty thousand, two seventy-five under the actual column. We've actually purchased since April first, two thousand Bridge Passes, and we've used about seventeen hundred of them in the two, in the first two months. Um, we have, I'm sorry?
Yeah.
You must have really good eyes, cause can you open this up just a hair of Brian for?
Right there. It's, yeah, it was more, it was just.
That's better, that's better.
Thank you.
A little better?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was, it was, yeah, it was a little blurry.
Okay.
That was my excuse.
Yeah.
No, this is a lot better.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um. When we purchased the bridge, we went through the, the new hire process for their eleven full-time employees, plus we went, uh, went through the open enrollment process for all of the employee insurance benefits. Um, with the closure of the free bridge, we've also hired eleven, um, part-time employees, um, for the closure of the bridge and processed all of those new hire packets as well. Uh, I sent letters to about a majority of their, the Groseal Bridge Company's vendors. Um, I sent introductory letters to about thirty vendors to introduce them and us and to make sure that they, they send us the required information for us to do business with them, which includes getting the Form W nine, so we knew, know how they're classified for tax purposes and ten ninety-nine reporting, and if, um, proof of their workers' comp insurance, if they're a contractor.
Can I ask you another question?
Mm-hmm.
So we have the initial financial reports in our deck for the meeting tonight of all the payments that were out. And I noticed that there were payments that were the responsibility of the bridge, but then I came down and I saw this. So what I'm wondering is, even though they're included in, in the deck of regular payments, do they have account numbers that then just tie them to this enterprise fund?
Correct, then they, they go in here. So the check register that you have actually went through last Friday. This report goes through May thirty-first. Um, so you actually probably saw more payments than is reflected on here.
Yeah, it just, it threw me off at first, cause I thought, why are the bridge payments in the check register with the other ones?
Yeah.
But then I thought, well, it's probably just the account number that drives it.
It is.
Okay.
It is. And it depends on how we get the invoices in. Um, if, we don't necessarily, because the checks are not a large number, um, we don't do a separate check run for the bridge company. We combine it with the general fund. We have one accounts payable fund. It's an impressed fund. So all the, all the payments go through that fund, and every time a check register is run, uh, uh, cover checks are, are, um, generated so that the respective funds are paying back the accounts payable fund, and that's how the, all the expenses go in the right fund.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Um. So a couple. So one of our largest expenses since acquiring the bridge was the four hundred and thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and one dollars for insurance. That is our liability and our property insurance. So it is not the insurance for the whole year. The liability insurance, which was about a hundred and forty thousand, is for the whole year, um, but our property insurance, we only paid at this point a six-month premium, which was just under three hundred thousand dollars. So we're going, we'll owe another six hundred thousand, uh, three hundred thousand dollars in three, uh, four more months. So our total, um, insurance expense is going to be about seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars for the year for the bridge.
So I just wanna emphasize that point for those individuals that utilize the bridge that think that there is just tons of money coming in, there are a lot of expenditures associated with that, that, that facility as well. Um, you know, if you're, if you're bringing in revenue of about a million dollars and, and obviously, uh, Theresa conditioned that during that time of that Wayne County closure, that just covers basically the insurance for the year for that structure. So just keep that in mind, that there are costs associated with the facility, they must be paid, and the revenue helps to support those expenses, so.
Eric, is this all in line with, um, you know, originally when we looked to buy the bridge, right, and the prior board worked on that and hired the different consultants to look at it and what they thought we would make and what they thought we would spend? Is there anything that jumps out? Were you surprised by anything, or is this all in line with what was originally looked at? Like, there's nothing on here that you would need to call out?
No, the, the only thing is if you look, if you look on the list of expenditures of about three-quarters of the way down, um, accounts to nine, five, six, one hundred, and nine, five, seven, nine hundred, where it says other expenses operating and other expenses administration. When I created this budget, I did it based on, um, some financials that were provided by the Groseal Bridge Company and how they categorized expenses. The amounts that they had in, in other was much greater than what we're used to, just putting in other. We are pretty specific in the account categories that we. We are pretty specific in the account categories that we use. I put those in there as placeholders, and I'm working with Maureen at the bridge to try and, I know there's some money, there's some expenses in those accounts, I have to clip, probably clear them out and put them in the right expenses.
About six thousand, right? It adds up to around six thousand, right?
Yeah.
So where I come from, we say that's lost in the rounding, so it's not like anything the board should be really concerned about or anything, right?
No, but when you look at the budget, it's, those are larger amounts. And so in reality, when you look at things, they could probably go in other specific accounts that we have. So this is going to be a year of, of learning what all those are and putting them in the right book.
And, and that goes along with the point of, you know, the township needs to get some experience under its belt with regards to the finances. You know, you, you want to try to avoid, in my opinion anyways, avoiding any drastic changes to the model, which I think has been stressed at this board level, at the board table by multiple trustees, avoiding drastic changes to the model until you get some experience of, you know, based upon the financial picture as we operate it, to try to keep as close as possible.
But from what I see, there's, there's no large surprise expenses.
Insurance is a bit higher than was anticipated.
Isn't it?
Yeah. The, the other line items are fairly in line, but you take that with the revenue and the expenditures, the rest of the revenue and expenditures. You know, sometime in, in other departments, we have, you know, higher than expected expenditures in certain items, but it's balanced by lower than expected in others. So, you know, we will have a much better picture at the end of the fiscal year, or to get closer to the end of fiscal year as we operate this thing for a full twelve-month period.
So a couple other things I wanted to point out, under maintenance and repairs, bridge and pier, the total right now is just over twenty-nine thousand. Most of that was to pay the, pay the company that, that takes care of the mechanic, if there's anything mechanical that goes wrong with the bridge. So we have a contract that actually goes from April of this year till January of twenty-seven. That represents the entire cost of that contract.
Pardon me, did you say so, two thousand twenty-seven is only twenty-nine thousand dollars in that contract?
For them, yes.
Okay.
Yep. And under equipment purchases, that includes the fuel tank that we had to purchase and, and some radios that we had to purchase.
Can I ask, would you, would you touch on, for the taxpayer, explain depreciation expenses for the bridge as well as the property tax? Because those are two larger line items, and please, thank you.
So for our fiscal year ended March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six, which is what this is for, we, that covers the twenty-twenty-five tax year. Because we did not own the bridge on December thirty-first of twenty-twenty-four, we are still, we still have to pay the property taxes on, on the, on the parcels in Grozeal and Riverview. We'll be filing exemptions with our township and the city of Riverview, so that this would be the only year that we would be paying property taxes, and going forward, we would not have that expense. Because we are, we are, we're government, we're tax exempt. But we just, because of the timing of the purchase, we didn't qualify for twenty-twenty-five. So we will still have that expense, and also at the time of closing, we had to pay a proration of the proper, twenty-twenty-four property taxes based on the purchase date of April first. And was...
Just explain how...
Oh, the depreciation, okay. So the, this, the toll bridge fund is what's called an enterprise fund. So an enterprise fund works much like a, a regular business. You, the fixed assets, like the bridge that we purchased, is not going to be shown on the revenue and expenditure page, it'll be shown on the balance sheet as a fixed asset. All the, the, the toll bridge, you know, all the, the toll plastic complex, all the, all the furniture and equipment, those are things that are eligible, they're capitalized, and so they are subject to depreciation. So the full cost is listed as an asset, and then each item is, we determine their useful life, and we use the straight-line method to depreciate it over the useful life of those items. So the useful life of the toll bridge is estimated to be fifty years. So that's, so then, that's how we're, we're expensing the actual cost of those assets. We're not expensing them when we purchase them, we're expensing them as they're used in that depreciation write-off.
Thank you, that was great. Thank you.
I just had something quick to add to, actually, two, two different things. And I don't want to interrupt you if you're...
No.
Okay. I know that there was a lot of conversation going on when the free bridge was closed about, well, somebody must be making a bunch of money off this bridge, there must be a lot of profit being made. You know, this, this bridge is owned by the people. If there's any additional revenue over expenditures that are experienced, you know, throughout a fiscal year, that money goes right back into the bridge's obligations, whether it's debt or capital improvements, or carried over in a fund balance to help out with subsequent years. So there are no profit, nobody generating a profit off this facility, it all goes right back into the structure. Also, I want to also make sure that people understand the way that this bridge is funded is through a combination of millages and toll revenue. And because of the nature of the millage, which is an unlimited tax bond, the millage rate is adjusted to satisfy whatever the debt obligations are. So in the case that you had a reduction in tolls, let's just say we opened the gates and we just let everybody go through for free, the millage rate would then have to flex to be able to cover that loss of revenue that was anticipated in the model. So you could open the gates, but Grozeal residents are going to pay for the opening of those gates and free passage for everybody that uses that toll bridge when those gates are open. In the case where you're charging a toll, you still have commercial entities and non-residents paying their fair share of the use of that structure. So I know there was a lot of suggestions to do that, but it's really counterproductive to the taxpayer in that their millage rate would have to be adjusted substantially. As a matter of fact, when we first looked at the proposal to purchase the toll bridge in the format that a millage would only be charged, it was north of three, three mils to be able to satisfy all the expense. The only way it was able to get down to one-point-six mils was to continue to use it as a toll bridge and charge tolls to offset that expense. So I just want to be very clear about what some of the suggestions would mean to the taxpayer, and any revenue that's derived, that's in addition to what's anticipated, helps to offset future capital costs, current debt, future debt, operational expense, all of the things that are necessary to run and, and make sure that bridge operates the way it needs to operate. So I just wanted to be very clear about that.
Thank you for saying that. That's really, really important. And I think that you probably should, if we could just go back and listen to what you said, type it up and put it on the township site, I truly think it's extremely important. What you said is lost in translation for a lot of people, they don't understand what an enterprise fund is. I, I think what you, it's brilliant, what you just said is perfect.
I agree.
So thank you.
I agree, thank you.
Sorry, I didn't...
I'd like to, I'd like to just add one bit of emphasis, I'm, I'm basically in the same ballpark, I'd like to compliment Margaret, and, and I think she's right, you made very good points. But if I've got this straight, when, when you have this toll, it means people from, who are not residents, businesses, pay money to get in here, we get a little bit of help out of that. And I think that that's important for people to realize when they take that strategy, that's in there. And I just wanted to add a little emphasis on that.
All right.
Any other questions?
So you sat, no, we're all good, I didn't know if, if you were all set.
Okay.
That was helpful, thank you.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, Teresa.
You're all set, you can keep going.
So I'd like to thank Teresa McLaughlin, our finance director, for that report, I appreciate that. I'd also like to say that I have witnessed the finance department, the administration, and Derek Field, township manager, and the township supervisor, Porcelli, and everybody else, that this has been months and mon, months in the making, and I, the folks that actually are working on it day-to-day are putting in way over, I mean, I think some people are putting eighteen-hour days in, and I appreciate all the work and help, and the patience of the people that are using the bridge going forward, so thank you. And I'll do the treasurer's report, this is for today's board meeting, June ninth, twenty-twenty-five. Investments for the month of May, Grozeal Township had a total of eleven million, six-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand, eight-hundred-and-forty-five dollars invested in various accounts and investment vehicles. These accounts generated interest income of thirty-two thousand, seven-hundred-and-ninety-six dollars and nine cents, with an average interest rate of three-point-zero-one-four percent. The May investment report can be viewed on the treasurer's section at grozeal.com. The treasurer's office, the two thousand twenty-five tax session is just around the corner. Summer tax bills will be mailed out the first week of July and are payable from July first through September fourteenth. Beginning September fifteenth, a late penalty charge will apply. All original tax bills are mailed to the property owner at the address that is on record. Mortgage companies that have requested tax bills will receive a duplicate copy. If you are a property owner and fail to receive your tax bill, please contact the treasurer's office. And early, in early June, Wayne County sent out letters to those property owners who failed to pay their twenty-twenty-four property taxes. A notification will also, also appear on your twenty-twenty-five forthcoming tax bill regarding those unpaid taxes. If you receive a letter from Wayne County or see a notice on your twenty, so, summer twenty-twenty-five tax bill, please call the Grozeal treasurer's office if you have any questions. And that is the treasurer's report. Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. William, you are up first on the trustee's report.
I'll be short, I've had my turn to speak this, this meeting. The Airport Commerce Park and the Planning Commission both meet on the sixteenth of the month, and the Planning Commission has been working on a, an effort to try and see if they can arrange for some financing for repaving a runway. The Planning Commission is working on that new master plan. So they've got things going and they're staying busy. That's my report.
Thank you, sir. Mark?
Hi, I sit on the zoning board of appeals. As of right now, we have a, an appeal scheduled for June twenty-fourth, for those who are not aware, is for the West Shores Gulf project. The planning commission approved a building project for that property, and we do have one citizen's appeal, which will be heard on the twenty-fourth at six P M. As of right now, I'm not aware of anything else scheduled that particular day for zoning board of appeals. And that concludes my report.
Okay, sir, thank you. Margaret?
So I'm going to start out with the Island Fest. I want to just say that, I'm sorry, Joe, I want to thank everyone who led this event and did the work to make it happen. I volunteered this year and saw only a fraction of how much that gets done at Island Fest. Events like this run well, as they do, because of those teams of people working together. So I just, I want to highlight a team that seems to not, we forget that they do so much during Island Fest, and that's the police department. So I spent the evening Saturday with the PD team just to get a firsthand idea of exactly how much work they do, the reserves. I cannot say enough about how well the reserves did at Island Fest. The whole GIPD team worked this event, and I mean the whole team. So I want to recognize specifically the reserve team, because they are not paid, they are volunteers, and they work so hard. And I want to be really honest, I feel that the PD does get overlooked when it comes to Island Fest, and they do a fabulous job. So I want to thank Sergeant Eric Vasquez. Eric, Sergeant Vasquez, worked eighteen-hour days on Saturday, along with his reserve team, and then the next morning was back at it for his, his day shift on Sunday. Another person I want to thank is Officer Darzniak. He is our drone guru, and his expertise never fail us. He also was on patrol duty, but he made sure to assist with event logistics with the drone. And I also want to point out that he supported field days at the school with the drone as well. I just want to point out traffic. I could not get over how efficient traffic went. How they handled the traffic for the event is impressive to me. The traffic is split into east and west directions, depending on where you've parked. I was in the westbound section, watching Chief Carmack expertly and efficiently clear that lot, which was huge. And I just want to point out, I don't think there's too many chiefs across down river that would do something like that. And I personally appreciate everything that was done. Just for next year's budget talks, I want to make sure that I'm very clear on this. There was approximately four thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine dollars worth of overtime for this event, sixteen hundred of it was used as comp time, so that number goes a little bit lower. The police department used some of their donation money to feed the officers all weekend long. So again, so there's no confusion with the budget, I want to make sure we know that that was handled by donations within the, the PD's budget. I want to thank Officer Canterbury for his dear graduation support. Also want to extend my congratulations to Officer Canterbury and his wife, who gave birth to a new baby girl. Congratulations to them. Finally, one more last thing, I want to take this time to say that, while I know it's a very small step, I do want to thank Wayne County for working with us a bit more collaboratively on this latest closure. I know there are people who will disagree, but I think it's a big difference from what we've had. While I believe there's a lot more room for improvements, I was pleasantly surprised by the fact that the bridge was reopened during that fabrication process. I personally feel like we have sat and watched no work be done in the past, and I think this time, there was a very clear understanding from Wayne County that they know that we're watching and we want to work with them, and we appreciate their consideration on that. So I just want to thank the people in Warren Evans' office, along with his DPS team, for keeping us going in the right direction. And our PD commission meeting this month is going to be on June eleventh, it's a Wednesday this month because of vacation time for a lot of the guys, and that's it.
Okay, thank you. Maggie?
Okay, so for the fire commission, James Gatt started full-time as fire marshal, and I'm glad because we needed him, the calls went up substantially. And for example, last month, they almost doubled on night calls, had an extra forty EMS calls, and they had twenty fire calls, so lots going on with them. The fire department and police department worked closely on the bridge closure, and I just wanted to thank Chiefs Roscoe and Carmack. The emergency vehicles got off on a timely basis, fast, safe, no issue there. Island Fest, awesome. I won't tell you, I found the best spot of the whole place to watch fireworks, so I'm going to keep that to myself. Chief Roscoe and Sergeant Andrew Huber teamed up to take equipment to the Henry Ford Hospital Appreciation, Appreciation Day on May twenty-eighth. So it was a charitable event, and funds went to the Henry Ford Trauma Department, but it was kind of cool, because they had the U of M, Mediflight, Coast Guard was there, our airboat, and so thank you for those two for doing, working on that. The fire commission's meeting, the next one is this week, Thursday, at five P M. On Greenways Open Space, and I'll mention on Grozeal Nature and Land Conservancy... On Greenways Open Space, and I'll mention on Grozeal Nature and Land Conservancy as well. We are tightening up on ordinance enforcement with encroachment. And before I forget, I want to thank Ross and James Derrick, just to let you know. They've been all over creating the policy, getting the steps down, working with us. And so, for Greenways Open Space, there's like four or five major encroachments. We found out some of those were done before the current homeowners bought their homes. Others were done, you know, more recently. The homeowners are great. They're responding to letters that were sent out, and they're gonna work with us to restore and remediate the property. We approved the trail refurbishment in Parkway Woods. That connects to the Grozeal Nature and Land Conservancy. Their next meeting is September seventh, but we might have a special meeting after the Fourth of July to talk about our communications plan for the committee and also an Eagle project for Joshua Burwald. So, okay, for Grozeal Nature and Land Conservancy, I shouldn't write, man. I can't read my own writing. But for them, I wanted to say, there's an encroachment on Gray's Drive that I've been kind of bugging, you know, Ross and James about. Well, so Ross finished up a letter and he's gonna be sending that out to the property owner to say, hey, we need this parking lot, we need the asphalt taken up, we need it restored, some native seeds put down. Yeah, but it's called the Gray Drives Easement. Yeah, but it is on Macomb, you're right. And so, I just don't want to say like any reference to any homeowners or business owners because they really are working with us. But anyways, the Resource Center was really happy to hear that that letter's going out. And they actually weighed in on the fix. And so, when the letters originally went out, they asked the homeowners, hey, come back and tell us how you're gonna fix this. Going forward, we'll probably put it where we tell them what we would like to see done. So, that went well. And the only other two things are, the Resource Center has a couple really good classes coming up. So, Saturday, June fourteenth, Native Tree Care and Composting. Derrick, I'm not sure, but I think you might know the one putting on the native trees. Your dad, Doug. And Joanne Wilson would do the composting. And then Tuesday, June seventeenth, on native plants, why they're so important to birds. That'll be June seventeenth from six to seven thirty.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Okay. Derrick, sir?
Just a quick, a couple items tonight. Good evening to all of you and to the residents. We have a DPS meeting tomorrow evening at seven o'clock in this room. We're gonna be talking about recommending to the Township Board a contract for some pretty extensive sewer rehab work within the community. And we're gonna be giving a short presentation about the means and methods for that type of work. So, if you're interested in how sewer lining is done, tune in tomorrow at seven o'clock to get an education on that. There is a revised bridge schedule that has been placed on the Township website. And when I say bridge schedule, I mean the Grozeal Toll Bridge work that we're planning on doing. So, our engineers have put together a summary of estimated dates and times for when the work will be completed. And that includes engineering, bidding, contracting, construction, construction midpoint, construction completion. So, that's available at grozeal.com. Feel free to take a look at that. And that's the most up-to-date information that we have from our engineers, H and H. That is obviously subject to change, and we will change it as necessary in order to reflect any modifications based upon market conditions or what the engineers find or, you know, contractor schedules or whatever it might be. So, that'll be a bit of a living document, and we will modify it as more information becomes available. I do want to also echo everybody else's comments about Island Fest. Sorry, Joe. Everybody's stealing your thunder. But all volunteers, you know, appreciate all the service that you provided. It was a great event. The weather held out and very enjoyable, always is every year. Thanks to all those that make it happen. I did want to update the Board briefly on the contract for the appraisal on that lot on Macomb Street. We did get the letter of intent executed, and we did contract with an appraisal company. I believe the cost was twelve hundred dollars. That should be completed within the next week or so. So, I will report back to the Board once that information is available. And then last, there was the re-release of the RFP for the Telecommunications Legal Services Contract that was put out about a week, a little less than a week ago. And I think the deadline on that is July ninth. So, once I get responses from interested parties, I will provide those to the Board for consideration. And I did rework the RFP a little bit to focus more on the core services, which are contract negotiations with kind of the ancillary market conditions assessments and future services as it relates to new locations and whatnot. I minimized that and emphasized the core stuff. And then went out and actively solicited firms that specialize in that type of work, that contract negotiation work. So, hopefully, we'll get a response that's more in line with what services we're looking for as compared to the last time. So, with that, that concludes my report.
Derrick, I've got a question for you.
Yes, sir.
We were talking about the Toll Bridge and how, you know, it was closed and opened up again and it will be closed again in the foreseeable future. We had an agreement with the Coast Guard. As I recall, it was good for sixty days, and we ended up postponing that. And then now we've got it in two chunks instead of one. Do we have a cooperative thing where we can get two smaller pieces instead of one big piece of time on opening and closing the bridge, being shut down, that stuff?
I will defer to the Supervisor because he has a great working relationship with them, and he has probably something to update on that. But that has been worked on by the Supervisor, so. But it's good news. So, I'll let him touch base on that.
I'm gonna talk about that bill instead of Island Fest, so. The first thing is, yeah, to answer your question, I contacted the United States Coast Guard. A gentleman, his last name is Walker from there. And what he's agreed to do is we sent him our numbers from the Toll Bridge on how many people are going across there and at what time. And he has agreed that he will do a consecutive sixty-day process with us. Let's just say, which isn't gonna occur, but let's say they open it for a week, close it for a week, open it. They will count their sixty days out of the whole thing, which is good. So, the continuous repair of the county bridge, we will still be able to have the right-of-way during rush hour. So, you are correct. That helps you out. That bridge won't be opening during rush hour for waterway traffic. Also, for the bridge, I wanted to talk about a couple of things that we're doing. We got web cameras that are going in, and we asked them, the company that we have, EOS has been the company that, since I was the Police Chief, has been our vendor. And it all works together, and it's all synced together, and we use them again. And we asked them, could you do it on an emergency basis? Basically, they're a couple of weeks behind in their work. I'm hoping to get these web cameras on the bridge. What this will do is you'll be able to go to grozeal.com. You'll be able to see four different cameras. There'll be the Streets of Meridian, the Streets of Bridge Road, the bridge itself, the Toll Plaza, and all the way up to West Jefferson. In case you're at work and you want to see how backed up it is or see where it's at if you're coming home or you want to get something done before you come home or leave early in the morning. So, this will help. But we're hoping to get this done before the next closure. In speaking about the next closure, we contacted the Deputy, I guess he'd be the Deputy Director of the DPS, just today again, Derrick and myself. And there is no change. They're still on course for around the nineteenth or twentieth. Now, we know what that means. They're not, it's not exact. When we know, we'll let you know as soon as we can get it out. But that's when they're still going to get their steel that they had to get fabricated and replace that, and it'd be a few weeks, approximately a few weeks, one way or another, for that repair. And I will say this to what Margaret said about our relationship with the county. Derrick and I met with them, and we actually met right on top of the bridge. And the gentleman who is the Director of the DPS asked us, would you like us to open the bridge when we're waiting for our parts that are fabricated? Now, this goes along with saying about, you know, all we want to do is collect money and do what we can. And we obviously, Derrick and I both said, no, if you can reopen the county bridge, that would be great. It would give the people on the Toll Bridge, it's gonna give you a break on paying. It's gonna, it's good for Grozeal. Please open the bridge. So, you know, that just goes in the saying that, you know, we're not just blinking our eyes and seeing dollar signs. I want the bridge, the county bridge rather, opened as much as we can for the people, for the benefit of Grozeal. So, anyway, Derrick, thank you for that explanation. That really was good. I've tried it on Facebook, maybe only three times now, and it must not. I gotta take more lessons from how you speak because that was really good. That was excellent how you explained that. So, anyway, this goes in with that bill too about, we wanted the county bridge to be open while they're waiting for their parts, which is, obviously, it's a better thing for everybody. Another thing we're trying to do is Derrick and I got together, we're trying to pave one lane of the Bridge Road in the city of Riverview. Now, we first thought the county was going to let us, which they said they would. And then, and Derrick, if I'm wrong or if I misspeak at all, please jump in. But the county said, no, let us. We want to do it our way, but we'll probably then pay for it because we were gonna tell them, we'll pay for it out of the revenue from the bridge if we can just get it done. And actually, we were gonna get it done last week. So, now we do have to go the county route. I'm not gonna say the county route is a little bit different or slower, but it is a little bit different and slower.
Where were you gonna pave that, Joe?
On the one side of Bridge Road from the Toll Plaza out to Jefferson Avenue.
Oh, where you kind of go off the road.
That's kind of, no, we want to pave shoulder. The bottom line is we want to pave shoulder.
That'd be nice.
We'll figure it out from there, what you do with that shoulder. So, anyway, with that said, that is what's upcoming for the bridge. And once again, we're on track for about the nineteenth or the twentieth. Is there anything else that I missed though for the bridge that you want to?
No, I think you covered it well. I think we'll try to get out the information. We will get the information out as quickly as we can about when the Free Bridge is gonna close next. Obviously, we're concerned too, as the Township, not only for Toll Bridge operations but other services that we have. I think I probably got a dozen phone calls today alone about when it's gonna open, or I'm sorry, when the Free Bridge is gonna close because people are trying to plan graduation parties and, you know, all kinds of stuff around that closure. And we've communicated that to the county. That is, soon as you guys know, make sure you get it to us because we've got to get that information out to the residents.
And we'll do that. I'll put another Facebook push. And as soon as we know it, you'll know it. And then Brian also will put out from the code red of the closure or anything, anything else we got to do, any platform that we can use, so. Okay, that's my report for tonight. Is anybody from the audience, Greg, did you have anything? Ms. Jade, I'm sorry.
No comments about the? Greg, comes in two-one-two-two-eighty. Sure. First of all, applaud Supervisor Porcellelli on that commitment to put that lane in from the Toll Plaza to Jefferson. That's a great, great news. When I was working with the bridge company back in two thousand and six, I came to this board and said that Paul Smoke was willing to actually pay for that very task. And we couldn't get support from the Township Board at the time and couldn't get it from Riverview. And Wayne County wouldn't do it. And here we are now nineteen years later, it hasn't been done. But, you know, glad that finally it's being done. Also, that webcam that you're gonna put in, that's great. We put a, we had a webcam, it was in the Toll Plaza back in two thousand and seven for the closure. It was very popular and only had one in there. What you're putting in is much more sophisticated, and I think it's, yeah, it's wonderful. That's gonna be great. Moving on to a couple of other things, Supervisor Porcellelli, the forensic audit. I think that's a great, great idea. I know you've been talking about this for quite some time. I think just to get the confidence level of the community, you know, higher on the Township's finances, I think it's a great thing to do that. Well worthwhile, all the expenditures and the dig deeper than the regular audit makes sense. Makes sense to me and others that, over the years, have, you know, been concerned about Township's finances. Even if you don't find anything, this will put it to rest, that you've looked deeper than normal. And if there's nothing, that's fantastic. If there is something, let's find it and correct it. Back to the bridge, the Bridge Commission. I again commend the Board on the decision to have seven interviews. I think that's a wise decision. I know there was some discussion before about whether, you know, you should have seven members of the Commissioner or five. And I know you settled on five, but, you know, at some point, maybe that if there are well-qualified individuals that want to serve, you might want to revisit that and expand it to seven. And if you interview seven and they're well-qualified, and you might have, you know, some ability to pick them from that broader group. Moving on to the issue of the FOIA. You know, I think, again, it was a wise decision tonight for the Township to pay for that. I was a big supporter of the millage. And, you know, during the whole process of the hearings, I had asked on multiple occasions if, after the Township took possession of the Toll Bridge, if they did, would the engineering report be made available? And what I recall hearing is, yes, it would. That was a commitment that was made by the previous Board to make that available. Now, I know that, you know, there's some concerns about safety and security rather. And I think if there is valid information in there that you can point to that releasing it would be a security concern, certainly it should be redacted. But I will say that, you know, I've FOIAed considerable volume of engineering data from Wayne County Parkway Bridge, from both Michigan Department of Transportation, Wayne County. And I never once had anything redacted. And I, you know, I would be somewhat surprised if there is anything in an engineering report that really would pose a security concern. But, you know, if someone has a legitimate basis for withholding information, by all means withhold it. But also keep in mind that if you over-redact, you can be subject to civil fines and legal fees if whoever's requesting this takes it to court. So, there are some risks associated with over-redaction in withholding information because the FOIA law in Michigan does require public records to be released if, you know, there's a solid request made for public records. And, you know, finally, you know, as far as, again, the information being released, I was at a social gathering on the island over the weekend. And, you know, a longtime resident of the island who I have great respect for was coming to me and saying, you know, he was concerned about the fact that some of this information hadn't been released about the engineering condition of the bridge. And, you know, I've heard this from multiple people on the island that, you know, they're concerned about the condition of the bridge. And I think you could alleviate a lot of issues by just putting the information out there. And the fact that you ask the community to support it, the millage, and you're putting, you know, roughly forty million dollars into that bridge, I think is gonna fully address all those concerns. And you're gonna have a very, very safe, long-term, you know, bridge for the community. But, you know, obviously, to spend that kind of money, you do have to show the community that it's important, you know, why you're spending it. And I think releasing that information would, in fact, you know, give people in the community the confidence that the money's gonna be well-spent and it is needed. So, thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Anybody else? All right, need a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Meeting adjourned.